Let's kind of get this party started. So as everyone knows, we're supposed to start at seven o'clock. My mistake, I apologize. It's 7:05 currently. The first part of our planning board meeting is normally spent with us having a conversation and doing some training. But I'd like for us to go into executive session first, and then if there's time remaining, we'll go to training. Okay? All right.
So we should make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of confidential advice of council.
Yep. May I have that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back. Watch out for my cord here, sorry.
Sorry.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 12th version of Planning Board. I'd like to start with a one, apologize, we ran a little bit behind schedule. I was a little late, we became a little later, so I do apologize. So we're going to try to expeditiously get through everything on this agenda. I would ask the public, with respect to comments, if someone makes a comment, let's not duplicate comments, because that tends to drag this out a little bit. We want to hear from everybody, but respectfully, we have a very long agenda. We want everybody to have a chance to speak, but the redundancies tend to kind of drag this down a little bit. So I would really appreciate it. Thank you. So I'd like to get a motion to accept the minutes from September.
Motion?
Second?
Before, yeah, I had a couple just minor edits of the minutes, which I haven't had a chance to circulate, but they are just, you know, they're not substantive.
Okay.
I also emailed comments on the minutes as well.
Okay, so Jennifer, you have all those?
Yes, yeah, I can circulate them, but they're, they're non-substantive edits.
Okay, got it. So motion still stands?
Yep, as amended.
As amended.
Motion.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So we're going to start with, oh, it went away.
11:13.
Yeah, just go back, I want to read it. I just laid out, it's okay. Yeah, Myers too, a little slow also. What happened to the old days of paper?
We used to have everything being instantaneous, so.
So, for your agenda. No, your agenda. Yeah, so I can start as far as technology catches up. We're going to start with item one. Continued public hearing for seeker environmental review and application for subdivision. Oh, that's been postponed to November?
Twelve Highlands.
Okay. Okay, it is.
Do you have the new agenda?
So, yeah, 12 Highlands is going to be adjourned to November 9th. I think Mr. Bodendorf just wanted to say a couple comments.
Oh, yeah, I had the date wrong. Amanda actually gave me the correct date to change the public hearing signage to. I conveyed that to my client after a phone call, and I, I'm programmed to think that the meetings are the second Tuesday of every month, so it was my fault. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so go ahead, read it for me.
Okay, first item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval. Hotel and event space 1113 Wolcott Avenue submitted by Prophecy Theater LLC.
Good evening, Acting Chair, members of the board. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, our parking consultant and traffic consultant, Phil Greeley of Colliers Engineering, and Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. We're also joined by the applicants, Gavin Hecker and Lauren Walling of Prophecy Theater. As the Acting Chair mentioned, we are before you for our continued seeker review and public hearing on the application. We were last before you in August, on August 9th, and then we took a month off to sort of refine and adjust the proposal from the reduced development proposal to now the further reduced development proposal, which R.A. will touch on some of those changes in just a minute. The result of that update that's currently before you and on the screen is a reduction or further reduced development proposal that will now only allow 180 total maximum attendees at the event space. We did submit a letter to your board on October 7th, of course, after the submission deadline, responsive to a very recently received letter from the former building inspector with respect to the parking determination for the 1964 exception. So the application that's now before the board is a fully zoning compliant application, and that also relates to the off-street parking requirements based on that particular exception. Again, R.A. is going to touch briefly on the minor site plan changes, which will steal some of his talking points. Our, the applicant himself will also speak to some of his communications with adjoining property owners. We have had a chance to review letters both for and against the application that are in your record. And then Mr. Greeley will speak to the updates. Again, the further reduction of the total number of attendees translates, of course, into a reduction of potential impacts for both parking and traffic. Before doing so, we did just want to note, the revised proposal again has maximum event size of 180 total. The cafe will not be open to the public when there are maximum sized events for 180 total people. The smaller sized events, not to exceed 130 people, would allow simultaneous use with the cafe. And those two numbers work together because the maximum occupancy of the cafe is 50. So take the two numbers together, you get the 180 maximum. So this is more than 50% overall deduction in the total number for attendees of the event space from the original proposal for the project. R.A. is now going to go over some of the slight changes, which includes a fence and some other details that have been requested by residents of the views, and then adjustment of some of the parallel parking spaces. There are no other changes to the hotel or other workings at this time. It really was just a reflection of Mr. Buckley's determination. We know that the board's consultants didn't have a chance to review that, but we did want to present to you all tonight so that we might be able to get some other comments in connection with the seeker review, to be able to try and really tee it up for, for November, so that way we have a fuller discussion there. So with that, understanding you have a busy agenda, I'll turn it to R.A. just to touch on those minor changes, and then we'll have Gavin touch on it and circle from there. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, so as Taylor mentioned, there was just very minor changes to the site plan. We, in response to some requests from the neighboring property owners of the view, we're putting a privacy fence at the rear of the parking lot between the two properties. And then we're putting sort of a picket fence on top of that existing stone wall along the side yard at the cemetery. And that's just to sort of prevent any kind of potential trespassing there. So that, basically, those two fences were added in response to the request from the Then the other minor adjustment was we shifted the parallel parking slightly and shifted the angle, reduced the driveway width slightly to be able to create a four-foot wide sidewalk along that parking area that connects to the sidewalk behind the hotel. So now that there's an easier pedestrian path from that parallel parking area all the way around. And then there was a little planting island added behind the parallel parking that would not allow people to stack another car in there and potentially, you know, try to create parking space where there shouldn't be one. And that is really the extent of the site plan changes.
Thanks, R.A. and Taylor. My name is Gavin Hecker. I just, I'm just here to speak to a couple of, I've been reading the letters that have been sent to us via the city for, for the public hearing and public comment, and I just wanted to speak to a couple of those comments. And there is, so there is a petition that's being presented to the general public by a few of the River Ridge residents, which, which I saw the other day, which contains no information about the project, but simply states that there are concerns revolving around safety, noise, parking, and traffic, which are, those are fundamental concerns that most of us have and are clearly, clearly important. However, these are existing systemic issues that are unrelated to an actual significant impact from our current proposal. And the petition also states that they are supportive of the venture to improve the church. However, it seems that any change to them is unacceptable, and that the level of use we see today is all that can be tolerated. So what we see today are leaky roofs and historic church in need of essential repair, and the current intensity of use is nowhere close to achieving the level needed for the funding that's adequate to sustain the building or even pay for utilities. So we see over an acre of cemetery that has been abandoned and vandalized for close to 100 years, and we see a boarded up house in decay. So any proposal for this property will require significant increase in use from what you see today, which is currently almost nonexistent. A church is an event space regardless of the religious component, and the current occupancy allows for basically limitless use for gatherings of 336 people. Our proposal cuts that number down to 180 and places control and parameters on parking noise and hours of operation. When we started this process, it's been over a year now, there was a survey done by the, our neighbors at River Ridge and, and with 100% resident participation, and that is also on record with the board. And it said at that point that there were 83% in favor of capacity limited to 200 or less, 11% in favor of a capacity between 200 and 300, and then the 6% in favor of 300 to 400. 96% of those were in favor of art shows and exhibitions, and 83 were in favor of theater. So that's just a survey that our neighbors presented to us a year ago. Of note, we have also received letters of support from neighbors at West End Lofts, which are also on record with the board, and we're happy to coordinate with West End Loft residents who have noted parking concerns in their letters and assure them that it will be clear to our patrons that parking in their lot is prohibited. And I believe that this can also be achieved by direct communication with the management at West End Lofts. So in terms of parking, we have, there are approximately 240 spaces available within 1,000 feet, and our need for off-site parking adds up to approximately, it adds up to 45 spaces, if the event, if the event space is at maximum capacity of 180. We will keep all patrons and guests informed and up to date on parking options and conditions while actively incentivizing alternatives to car transport. Since we have a high occupancy of our onsite parking spaces due to the hotel shared event parking, our lot will actually remain relatively quiet during event times. So some of the measures that are being taken in response to some of these other comments from the public are, as R.A. noted, we, we are now including a, a fence along the property to the cemetery and the parking lot, and that will prevent trespassing and pollution from headlights in our parking lot. And then the other day, we had our landscape architect, Deborah Adamsons, came over to talk to, speak with one of our neighbors at the River Ridge and explain to her the, the dense vegetative boundary that we had planned a long time ago in, in respect to their concerns about the boundary on that side. Other things that we can do are include security cameras for increased safety, and, and we've also, we removed an existing driveway and the extension that was originally in our plans to keep more people, vehicles away from the River Ridge side. So another measure we can take is at the time of an event ending, we'll have a security staff that will patrol the outdoor area to ensure a safe and orderly and quiet dispersment of attendees, and then we will have staff to control event traffic flow on our property and ensure there are no backups. I'm almost done here, but there, so there were a couple of comments from a couple more neighbors at River, River Ridge. Alex Campbell and Casey Rogers were in support of our project, and they were speaking to, in particular, loadout noise. And, and I took this to heart, they have a, they, they have a good point here. And so we have the ability to actually prohibit, what we're, what we're going to do is prohibit the use, loading of trucks requiring lift gates or ramps to, to before 10 o'clock on all days, and that shouldn't be a problem. So this is not a large event space. However, we hear that those opposing this project are comparing us to venues with capacities between 1,000 and 3,000 people. And again, we are proposing a maximum of 180. So we would likely average 20 patrons at peak hours on weekdays in the event space and cafe, and there would be mostly small workshops, rehearsals, or classes during this time, and many of these programs will be youth oriented. And we would likely average 100, between 100 and 150 for any given Friday or Saturday evening, and that would be during events and typically in the busy season. And typically, 9:00 PM would be the peak hours on Saturday evening for a two-hour event, and the average event would end by 10 o'clock. Our focus in all regards remains dedicated to the arts and cultural agendas, and by achieving these goals, we can assure the sustainability of the church as an art-based space. And that's all I have to say this evening, and I thank you for your time.
Good evening, Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. We prepared the traffic and parking information for the project. Just a quick update, not to repeat what's already been said. We submitted a letter October 6th, which responded to the various comments from your consultants, John Clark and Creighton Manning, and attached to that letter was also the updated traffic and parking management plan that was put together to deal with, you know, operations during conditions. As specified in there, during certain events, as needed, we would provide shuttles, you know, for some of the areas, you know, we identified all the parking areas in the proximity. So that would be an added item that's covered in the parking and traffic management plan. I think the reduction, you know, with the 180 cap was addressed as well as if the cap, that's with the cafe closed. If the cafe was open, the cap, the cap would be at 130. So with that, I think we have covered all the different scenarios. We are still waiting for comments back from New York State DOT. We have some striping modifications and other improvements. We expected those this week. We have not received them yet, but they should be forthcoming, and we will provide the board with that information. And be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So probably go to the public first. If anyone's here, would you like to make a comment? State your name.
Teresa Kraft, and I apologize upfront if you don't want to hear from the public. I have spoken at other public hearings. But last night I attended the City Beacon workshop, listening intently as they discussed the agenda line item number one titled, "Planning Board Review." The council discussed the topic with the city's legal counsel, Nick Ward Willis, who was on, in attendance via Zoom. He had just discussed the basic process of law and the role of the planning board, and the preview that they hold in their role as members of the planning board. One of the consistent questions the council were asking is how a project in the process can be squelched or scaled back in the planning board process. It was further mentioned by the law counsel that the planning board had the right to navigate a project based on the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Wetlands, steep slopes, and the most important one, quality of life, which includes traffic, noise, and character of community. It's important to note, the church at no time used the space 12-plus hours a day or 365 days a year. I believe if you listen closely to all the key points mentioned during the workshop last night, this project must be scaled back based on the terms mentioned by legal counsel. There are in fact the same concerns listed by the city residents and the surrounding neighbors regarding this project. Please have this developer scale back this project as planned based on law, quality of life, traffic, noise, and character of this community. Regarding the over 20 public comment letters in tonight's agenda is heartbreaking. Just because they stated it's now at 50% reduction in capacity still does not make this a workable number at the wrong location. 180 patrons in and out is nothing we've seen in Beacon weekly. It will be like sitting in the Renegades game traffic every weekend. Please work for the community tonight and vote to not approve as presented tonight. It's still way too big. Still way too big. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teresa, I want to clarify something. I did not say I did not want to hear from the public. I requested that we don't.
But I think if people come out and want to.
I requested that we avoid redundancy if possible.
There is a lot of redundancy.
But I'm saying for the purpose of saying something over and over.
But people will take that as not wanting to come out.
It's not a debate, I'm clarifying what I said.
Okay. But a lot of people will not get up.
That's all, not what you said, what I said.
People will not get up.
I did not say I did not want to hear from the public. I said I would request that we, if we can avoid redundancy.
Okay, but those people who will.
But that's what I said, that's not, not what you said.
But people will think that they may be redundant, so they will not get up here. You will not see the other people that want to talk.
I'm sure people are adults and they can make their decision. Thank you, Teresa, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could make just one suggestion, if there is somebody who would like to make a comment, but has heard the comment that they want to make already made, that person could get up and say, "I agree with the foregoing speaker regarding parking, traffic, whatever it may be," without going into detail about.
That's fine. And again, I, I say this with respect to everybody here. It's not meant to limit anybody's voice at all. If you feel empowered to say it again, say it, but I'm just saying for the purpose of all of us as City of Beacon citizens. That's why I want to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, Clark, Ebbin, 2 Wilson Street. Let me just start to say thank you for like 20 years of doing this. And it's very easy to personalize things, and perhaps I'm the biggest offender with my mouth, but the reality is, is that we are very lucky as a city to have our land be worth so much money. My singular opposition to the proposal is that it's undercapitalized and removing the opportunity for significant room tax in generation of, of, of commercial taxation. And the way I like to look at taxation, I like to look at a perlineal foot of street. And when I do a highest and best use analysis, and I'm looking at what's the best interest to the City of Beacon, I look at how much tax collection can be generated perlineal foot for a choice piece of property. Intuition doesn't have to go too far to understand that I'm totally dissatisfied with the apartments and condos, whatever, that were built on Wolcott with such a magnificent view adjacent to the station that should have been office space or hotels. I think the city, the, the most productive thing the planning board could do tonight with this proposal is to refer back to the city council and ask the city council to take a good, hard look at how the train traffic can inculcate itself with this site, because it's the most beautiful remaining site that has the shortest walk to Main Street. And that alone supersedes just about everything. Because that comes taxation. It comes room taxation. It comes employment. And it comes for the ability to create more affordable housing with less property taxation to the residential sector of this city's economy. And very little has been paid, except for a lot of whimpering with people wanting to play Monopoly with other people's land. The laws are very stringent, and this planning board and its attorney knows darn well that there's an extraordinary obligation by the planning board to promote a healthy tax base and not just give away to every single thing that comes along because it looks good on paper. I strongly encourage the city to take a deep breath for one meeting, and the planning board send back to the council and say, "Is this really what's in the best interest to communicate the train station with Main Street and promote jobs and taxation and a healthier tax base?" I think the city should have some bravery and help the developer build something that is twice the size and that integrates the beauty of the view with the social structure of Main Street that promotes jobs and commercial taxation to make a more affordable community for all the, the, the land, the property, residential property owners in the city. I think I've gone, I'm going to, five minutes or three? What is it?
Three and a half.
Where am I? Three or five, sir?
What's our limit for?
No, I mean, do I get five?
It's three minutes, three.
You got a minute and a half.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. So, to, I'm, I'm not asking for a long delay, but what I am asking is for a serious sober look at the advantages Beacon holds as a walkable community to the international travel market when it finally evolves its steward. And, and, and I believe that there probably should even be a tax policy for, if at all possible, for, for hotels in City of Beacon, and for promotion of Beacon as a place to stay to international travelers. The bottom line is, it's a very unique spot. It's a historic spot. It deserves the reverence of the satisfactory amount of capital investment to provide for the parking, to provide for the commerce, and provide for the tax base for the City of Beacon. So I urge the, the, the planning board to send a little memo to the city council and say, "Really? Is this what you're leaving us with?" Because I think they've kind of put you in a rough spot.
Thank you. Things come up.
Jane Riley, 4 Stratford Avenue, Beacon, New York. So I'm down the road from this proposal, this project.
Yeah, just using the mic there.
And my position hasn't changed. I think it's too aggressive, too ambitious for this small lot. It just doesn't work. And the other thing I have a question on is I was told that this group does not own this property at this time, that their ownership is contingent upon getting approval for this project. Now, I don't know if there's anybody here who can, who can address that or not, but if so, I don't think that the sale should go through. No matter what I've heard, I haven't heard anything I like about this project. It doesn't fit. It's too small for this number of people, 180, music, people coming and going. I'm down the road, I don't want to deal with the overflow. People drinking, cars, noise. I don't want it. And if it's, has it been sold, I hope it isn't sold. Sorry. That's it.
Thank you. Tell him that address.
Sorry to interrupt. If you, if you see fit, we'll, we'll address all comments at the end, that way the public can make, but if there are specific comments you want us to come up and address, and you want me to address that you're the owner, they own the property.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can, yeah.
Good evening. Susan Johnson, Gavin, I live over in West End Lofts. I think it's a wonderful idea. I understand that the church is a beautiful building, and I understand the concept that we need to, to afford the utilities in the building itself, and that can only come with, you know, funding or, you know, some type of income generating project. I came here with two ideas. One of them was, somebody mentioned it already, about the shuttle. I think that that should be written in, that there should be a shuttle involved, and there should be designated sites. And the other piece that I was going to say is that my understanding is the hotel is going to be 30 rooms. I would knock it down to 15 or 20. That's it. But it's a good idea, I think it's going to be good for the community.
Alex Rivers, 2 Academy Street. I live directly across the street from the church. Last time I spoke, there was questions and uncertainties I was, had, parking, the size. I've seen that they've, the developer has gone through efforts to listen to the community and make reduction size, has addressed my concerns with that. 180, in my view, is a reasonable number for an event space. I think it can bring a lot of culture and community. I think it can bring a lot of culture and community. I'd rather see the space used where the community has access to see it as opposed to being taken over by a developer who just built into condos and no one has any access to it, and it just becomes something we get to look at on the outside. I feel like the developer has gone through good faith efforts to listen to everyone, and I feel in support of it, and I think that it would be really great for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Roshan. My wife and I just moved here last year. And my only concern is that we live in Hammond Plaza, and our unit abuts the cemetery, kind of the opposite side to the view. And I didn't hear any mention of what was going to be happening with that border. I don't know what the, if there's going to be a park or something back there, but the idea of having people kind of walk around just beyond my backyard feels a little weird. Beyond that, I kind of like the idea of like an arts space in the neighborhood. The traffic and the parking feel a little stressful. And the only other thing is my three-year-old loves the church bell, so if you could keep that, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, please.
Betty Wall, River Ridge. Twelve iterations-
Use the mic if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twelve-plus iterations of the proposal over the past fifteen months, and still there is significant planning board and community concern. Thirty-one onsite parking spaces for a hotel, bar, cafe, event venue with a capacity of a hundred and eighty people, not including hotel guests and staff. Three potential offsite parking lease agreements that haven't been seen, one of which is contingent upon the developer's proposal being approved, one of which is three-quarters of a mile away, and one of which has a previously approved site plan for multi-plan, or I'm sorry, for multifamily parking. Four pedestrians tragically struck by cars in the past year in Beacon. One shuttle bus that was going to be provided for events with over a hundred and thirty attendees, but now will be provided at the developer's discretion, which could mean zero shuttle buses. Eighty-two-plus comments from Beacon residents on a recent Beacon, New York Facebook page regarding the lack of parking in town. Three hundred and forty-three petition signatures and countless letters from residents voicing their concerns about quality of life issues if this project is approved. Eight AM to ten-thirty PM or eleven-thirty PM, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, which are the latest proposed hours of operation for this venue located feet away from hundreds of residential houses, apartments, and townhomes. Are there any other Beacon businesses with those hours? Six planning board members who can mitigate or prevent something that once approved will be difficult, if not impossible, to monitor and control. Please make sure that the numbers add up and a few people don't profit while an entire city suffers the consequences.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rach Rifkin?
Use the mic, please. Thank you.
Rach Rifkin, River Ridge.
To City Hall, across the street at Bank Square is having outdoor live performances. This is all indoor. There is no outdoor proposed here. So, and we also have a noise study that I'll ask the applicant also to speak to, that wasn't presented earlier in our presentation. But before I, I think I mostly touched on some of those. So, the current operations are really, it's a church. It's been operating that way for hundreds of years. And that's there. We have a parking determination from the building department, a determination about what the exception for this property is. And our traffic consultants have otherwise prepared reports that your consultants have reviewed and done peer review and applied, what the parking requirements are, what's available in the area, and that it would not have a significant adverse impact on the community. We understand those, there are concerns expressed by the public about getting to the site, shuttling and everything, but the applicant is committing and is employing all types of mechanisms, whereas the existing conditions, that's, that's not there. They're not required to do any of these features or functions to help mitigate or control the operations on the site, because it's an existing church that was done, was, was built well before zoning enacted in the city. So, with that, I will turn it to Gavin, just to talk, walk through the employee component, but we can certainly also submit, and will submit to you, in connection with your secret review, that analysis. So, it's all out and written out for the board for its November meeting as well.
Thank you.
So, typically for an event of 180 capacity, we would have approximately, well, four parking attendants, ushers, and securities would add up to four. House manager would be one, house technician one, concessions three, and the event organizers and presenters, which would be from one to 10 people. And then, we would have a cafe staff that would be typically four people, give or take the, you know, the crowd size and what we are doing with the business at the time.
I don't, I don't want to reopen the, I don't want to...
And again, for the benefit of the board, we will submit this in writing. So, there's no, the responses to the comments, we will also write in writing.
And then, the hotel employees?
Yeah. At the hotel, there would be one, one desk staff at the hotel.
That's it?
Yeah. It's, it's a boutique 30-room hotel. They'll, well, there would be cleaners that come in and clean the rooms.
So, if I may, we, the parking count and calculation is different from the questions that the board are presenting. So, we'll address that from a general standpoint. But the parking has been addressed for what is a requirement and how that relates to the actual requirements, which don't tie to employees. So, it's separate issues.
I didn't want to reopen the, the question, I think, because there has been a decision on the number of spaces that are required. But I think maybe just to, just to clarify, it sounds like, if, it sounds like staff will primarily be expected to find off-site parking.
There's a, the management plan is designed and encompasses that. And I won't, I don't want to, we'll pull from that plan, which is designed exactly to this, these specifications, where people are coming from, when they're at the peak arrivals, who's going to be directing traffic in and out of the site. As Gavin mentioned tonight, we're offering even further reductions for the, the loadout of any of these, you know, if there are larger events, you know, capping those hours of operation. We're trying to work with time, place, and manner restrictions that respect the community, that work with the community, and address your comments. But we'll put that into, you know, because again, the management plan is designed for just that, to talk, not just in how people get to the site, but how the operators and those that are working on the site get there. And there are ways to, to manage where they park, how they get there, and how you can get them on the site.
If I could just clarify just one distinction that we've been talking about here. So, there has been a determination made by the former building inspector with respect to the parking requirement for zoning purposes, and what they, what, you know, what their zoning calculation is for parking, and also applying the, what we call the 1964 exemption in the code. But that is different from your obligations under the special use permit that they're seeking, which includes, as one of the standards, that they have to demonstrate that parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, and suitably located and screened, et cetera. So, while the zoning issue has been put to bed as to whether or not they need to seek a variance, and whether or not their parking calculations are correct, this board is, is properly doing its diligence in asking questions about where are the employees going to park, how is parking going to be managed? Because that all relates to your, not only your secret review, but also your special permit standards. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the board, applicant, and the public.
Well, if it isn't already, you know, it's contained within our management, but we'll, we'll tease out that specific point, because it, to Ms. Gray's points, we understand the distinction and want to ensure that the board knows that that's part of that plan. I mean, that's an important part of all of it. But this site is being designed, and the number of attendees being reduced, all of the, the numbers have been trending to ensure that that, there is adequate facilities, and that have already been provided in our reports, but we'll pull that part out.
Yeah. We, we went over this when we were talking about the 180, and that, that is inclusive of all these people that I just mentioned. It gives, it gives space for that as well.
Just, yeah, I don't want to confuse the board there, but the 180 number actually doesn't utilize all of the, when you take a maximum event of 180 people, you actually have a surplus of parking available based on the 1964 exception. Totally different, I, yeah, I don't, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go there for tonight. We've done that before, but we'll, we've, we have this in our plan, and we'll make sure it's teased out for the benefit of the public and the board.
Let's go to our professionals. Public will have a chance to speak again. I'm, all right, appreciate that. John, did you finish?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah.
A lot of my comments are repeats of previous comments, because I don't think they've been adequately addressed. But I want to, the new information that came out in the last submittal was the sound level report. And we haven't had a lot of experience with noise reports, because of, it's a relatively new law. But as I read the report, the person who did the analysis cited the wrong chapter, or section in the report. And so, I think that has to be looked at. And I think, otherwise, I'll pass on to Mr. Russo, who also has the recommendation on the sound report.
So, I still have outstanding comments from previous correspondences, which the applicant needs to address. But with regards to the sound study that was submitted, I'm recommending the board look at obtaining consultant, a sound consultant, to review the report, review the study that they did, and give you feedback as to if it's acceptable, not acceptable, what else should be looked at, to ensure that we're looking at this noise and the generation of noise from the site.
We have no objection.
Okay. That's all?
That's it.
Let's go around the board. Karen?
I still have concerns on parking. Are there, I know that you're relying on some public parking lots in your plan, and should one of those parking lots, or more than one, become unavailable? Is there contingency?
Yes. And I'll, I'll steal Mr. Greeley's talking point on this front, but we have been talking about, while the management plan is there and identified these lots, we've, we've been accounting for, as Mr. Clark's pointed out many times, that these are not, may not be forever lots. And of course, the converse also being true, but I'm not going to go to that. But yes, we're, we're also considering, and I guess Mr. Greeley can speak more specifically to it, but a post-monitoring study that would allow the operations to be evaluated post-approval. So, that way, you, you know, what's operating in the sense of the site is, is indeed how everything's functioning. So, it's sort of a check to the balance, or belt to the suspenders, from, from an operational capacity or, or standpoint. So, that's another, on top of, you know, all the mitigation measures that we're proposing, it, it's just a check on how they, they're functioning and working.
Okay. The, the other concern about the noise, I understand that your report was focused on the noise that was generated from inside the building. Have you looked at the noise issues generated from outside the building? And what are your measures for dealing with those? And my last concern is with the site plan and the parking lot, what are the efforts to screen the parking lot to the north?
So, we are, so if I, if I may, I can have Gavin speak to the, the first part, and then the screening Ari had mentioned earlier, but we are employing additional means. But if that's not, Ari, is that where we're including the fencing?
Uh, no.
But we can, we're not, we have no objection. I think there's been kind of back and forth with each of the adjoining properties about whether they want or don't want fencing or, or tree, you know. So, we're, we're balancing that, that issue.
And with respect to your first question, I, I believe I addressed this in my opening comment. We will provide, when, when events let out, we'll provide a security outside to make sure that that happens peacefully and quietly and quickly at, at that level. And, and this, this, this will typically be, on, on a Friday or Saturday night, would be between 10:00 and 10:30. And part of, part of also what I said was that, since we do have a hotel on site, the, the dispersment of people will pretty much quickly leave our area, not gather in the parking lot, to get all their cars out, because the cars that are parked there will either be hotel guests, or a handful of other people that are associated with the event. And there's not the opportunity to, to, to sort of hang out. But really, it will be taken care of by staff that will just make everybody leave, pretty much, and control that crowd.
Okay. But you still haven't addressed the issue of how are you going to mitigate sound? I understand that you're trying to disperse crowds, but there will be noise in that process. You know, I, I've never been to an 180-person event where, you know, it's a quiet leaving affair. So, I'd just like to know how you're addressing the inevitable noise that is generated outside of the building.
I'm not sure what noise you're talking about, other than people talking as they leave. So, if you could be more specific.
Are you considering doing a sound study for expected exterior noise levels, and how to address them?
So, typically, I mean, I'll, I'll sort of defer to your planner as well. I mean, that typically wouldn't be an analysis that we conduct, because it's, again, getting into the cars, it's traveling between the hotel and the, the event space itself, because many of the guests utilizing the hotel will be patroning the event space and vice versa. Again, it's, it's sort of the ambient car and, and noises of the folks, you know, entering, exiting. But the idea is we're managing that utilizing staff to, again, flow, not have anybody hang out in the parking lot. That's not a goal, and certainly doesn't serve this facility or the operations. And that's why we have a management plan to direct those people out, and mostly keep the flow moving. And again, reduce to those limited periods, and really on, on those weekend dates.
Okay. I think it remains a concern, both me as a board member and the community, that you, you know, address the sound of, you know, exteriorly generated noise.
Understood. And again, I don't need to say it, but, but...
I mean, you're just seem to be saying, like, people are just going to, you know, we're going to disperse people. I've never been to an event, if 30 of your people, you know, 150 people, you stand around, you chat, you discuss what just, you just participated in, you know, it, I can't imagine you're just going to want to chase people off of the property. They're standing on the front lawn, they're enjoying themselves. I think you need to, you know, look at the, this issue that's been raised and address it.
We'll look at it again, you know, from a, from that, from that angle and perspective. You know, it's...
Right. And there's also, there's also ordinance, an ordinance to provide for mitigation of this as well. And we believe that we can provide staff that will be able to disperse a crowd, so that it does, nothing like that is beyond any ordinance that is put in place by the city of Beacon.
And then, for the loadout, just so I understand, the, the time restriction that you're putting on loading the, breaking down of an event, does that mean that the breakdown basically happens the next day?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Kevin?
I just wanted to mention that I, I think usually, these kinds of environmental acoustic reports are done by different kinds of engineers than audiovisual engineers. And I, I really want to support the idea of getting a professional firm that understands the way that sound works inside of buildings as a, and, and, and in the way that it functions generally from wide experience, and studying this professionally. So, I, I really think that's a, that would be a good thing for us to do. Because I, I feel like this is a very simple, and I think whatever, depending on, on the reports from the applicant, can be problematic. Let's leave it at that. It may not give us the full picture. Sorry.
No, that's okay. And we've already agreed, we're accepting of having a consultant review.
Thanks. So, Gavin, you responded to the comment from the public about noise during loadout. And tonight, you said that you were looking closely at the timing of different activities, and that you would prevent the use, I think you said, of trucks with lift gates, or, or ramps, metal ramps, you know, to before 10:00 PM. In the, in the management plan that you're discussing, have you been able to collate all of these different kind of controls and procedures into a very specific task analysis that lays out, okay, here's, you know, for an event that's going to be staged, here's what's happening, you know, during each kind of time interval, you know, over the course of the evening. And, you know, can you do that with a detailed evaluation of the, the issues that are likely to cause an impact, and then how they would be controlled? Because I think, I think the danger, one of the dangers that's facing us, or the challenges that's facing us, is that we have a, a significant number of constraints that have been discussed, and controls that have been proposed. But I don't know if they're all, if they're all being captured in one place. And when it comes time to make decisions, and, and to, to vote on permits, it's just going to be really helpful if we can have everything collected in one place in a very comprehensive manner. You know, to the, to the question of how, Karen, I agree with you about, you know, there's a lot of different ways in which people move out of events. And I've been to concerts at places like Roseland Ballroom in New York City, where after the encore, the lights came up almost instantaneously, and the security staff pretty aggressively moved people out of the space. You weren't given any time to have another beer, or finish your drink. They were like forming a chain and just moving you out. Now, that, that creates a certain kind of atmosphere that may not be what everybody desires to have. You know, there are places where you can have one more drink after the concert's over. There are places where people wait outside by the bus, because they're hoping to get an autograph, or talk to an artist. And so, yeah, I think, you know, the management plan also needs to lay out just how things are going to be closed out, you know. And, and I still think even tonight, there was a little bit of ambiguity about timing in terms of when loadout is happening. You said before 10 for some, you know, for some types of equipment. But then, a few minutes ago, you made a reference to 10:30 for something else. And I'm just, you know, it is, if people are going to, if 130 people are going to be moving, for example, down the path through the cemetery portion of the property, to go to parking spaces at the train station, it could take 20 minutes for a decent group of people to wind their way down there. And like you said, people, they're always stopping and talking about the set list, or what they heard, or did you see that solo, or whatever. And it's going, there's going to be conversation noise for some duration, you know, after the event, as people depart the property. And I think, the, the more that all of this stuff is kind of recognized, and, and just confronted head-on, you know, laid out in a description of how things are going to happen, so that, you know, that's possible to identify the impacts, and look at how to mitigate them, the easier it's going to be to, you know, for us to check the boxes, and, and determine, you know, whether we've got satisfactory mitigation. Thanks.
In the interest of moving things along, I'm just going to say that I share all the concerns that have been expressed. And I like the idea of an event space, but the reality of the execution, I, I remain to be convinced that it can be done. And that's, I know, I understand that's what we're all looking into. So, it'd be great if it can.
I'm going to say ditto to everything my board members said. But I promised I would go back to the public for anyone that wanted to make another comment. So, I'm going to do so.
Can I make one more?
If you, yes, thanks.
And then, we'll actually, at the, after the end, I realized we didn't mention that there was a question about the trail and its location. So, we'll...
Let's, you can answer that now. Give me a few seconds.
So, Ari, if you pull up the trail. Oh, yeah. I guess you can see it. So, as far as the, the question of where the trail ends up, I mean, the intent is we can look at other screening, other options there, if there is something that, that is of concern to those neighborhood property owners. The first we've heard of, of that side of, of concern. But the intent there is not to, you know, congregate or otherwise. It's, it's really just another linkage, as there are for West End lofts and others. But we can certainly consider some screening in that location, or otherwise, if that would further mitigate concerns in that area.
Thank you. Just for the record, just re, no, no, come up, come up. But for the record, reintroduce yourself for the purpose of the record. Thank you.
Betty Wall.
If you have to say that, say it in the mic.
I'm Betty Wall. Just to your point, we live right next door to this event venue. It's a big open space coming into our driveway. And I'm concerned mostly about the outdoor noise, because they're saying that all of the parking spots are going to be used for hotel guests. So, people aren't going to be getting into their cars. They're, they're going to be walking by our property, walking by the view, walking by the lofts. And if they're chased out of the church, they're going to come hang out somewhere else, right next door, or on the other blocks in our neighborhood. So, that's what we're concerned about, that noise and that. So... Thank you.
Thank you.
Because you do have the right...
You speak to the mic, please.
Just reintroduce yourself.
Reintroduce yourself.
You do have the right to do, to make this stuff, or say yes, no. And I don't even know how the...
Can you reintroduce yourself?
Reintroduce yourself.
Rachel Rifkin?
Okay, in the mic.
I'm short, okay?
That's okay.
I'm short.
I'm tall, I guess.
So, you do, as the board, according to the Beacon zoning laws, have the right to say yes, no? And if the hotel doesn't even, there's no even, the hotel still doesn't even have the right capacity. So, how does the church have the capacity? And they're not even doing attendees. And has SECR been done? Has the SECR review, or, I'm sorry, my English is not the best.
No, you, you're, we're in the process...
You're in the process. So, what does that mean?
And so, are you, do you have a specific question, so we can answer it, because...
Yes, SECR. So, has SECR been done?
So, we're gathering information right now.
Right now.
So, all of this, this whole process of, of the experts' reports that have been submitted by the applicant, the comments that have come from the city's planner and engineer, that is the gathering of information to determine whether there's an impact. So, the objective is, by the end of this process, including the hearing public comment, and considering that, that we'll have enough information to be able to make a vote on a declaration.
And apparently, a certificate of appropriateness?
We're in the process of conducting, the board members say SECR.
So, what is, so, just as you were saying, don't repeat yourself.
So, everything you're seeing, everything you're seeing us do right now is part of that process.
And with honor, and which, respectively, sir, I can't see your name right now. But, um, no, no, I can't read it. It's, I, I think I have 25 anyway. I can, I don't need glasses yet. But, um, as, just as you want the public to go and not repeat itself, please advise the remaining standards, or the remaining, so we're not still SECR, certificate of appropriateness has not been deemed, correct?
We're still in the SECR process.
Let me just, maybe I can clarify. So, there have been no decisions made on this application, no final determinations on SECR, no final determinations on special use permit or site plan. There are a number of applications that the applicant has before the board. And this whole process that you've seen play out, is the app, is the, the board doing its due diligence, asking the questions, getting more information from the applicant, because ultimately, the board needs to determine whether there may be a significant adverse environmental impact as a result of the project. And then, there's a special use permit that the applicant has requested. That special use permit has a whole litany of standards in the code, that the applicant needs to demonstrate that they meet, in order for this board to be able to approve a special permit. So, we're in that process...
Thank you. That was very well stated, very well done. And is applicant allowed to have weddings?
That is, this board is not the, the enforcement authority. So, we can refer that question to the building department. But I don't think we're, we're going to, we're prepared to answer that question tonight.
So far, if there has been a wedding, it has not been of any, because I don't think you get water even.
I don't think the applicant is proposing, and maybe Taylor, you can clarify this. I don't know that the applicant is proposing to have weddings at the site.
He's had a wedding. He's had a website.
So, this, this board is reviewing the proposed application, not what's the current use of the property.
Did that answer your questions?
All of them.
Yeah. Are you done? I'm asking. Okay. Thank you very much. Was anybody else from the public?
So, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Jane Riley, for Stratford Avenue. I didn't follow the discussion on the parking, if there still is a request for parking off-street. So, and I really didn't follow it. Maybe back there, I couldn't hear at all. But I'm just wondering what's happening with that.
The applicant is still proposing to utilize off-site parking to satisfy its parking demand. But the applicant does not require a zoning variance with respect to its zoning requirements for parking.
So, there's no zoning approval on this project?
There is no variance required from the zoning board of appeals.
I think you should clarify that they, they are meeting the zoning, so there's no variance required.
Right, right. It is zoning compliant.
So, right now, there's, it's zoning compliant, as, as proposed.
So, what made it going to zoning compliant, going from 398 to 180?
That's, yes, that's largely part of it, because there's, I'll get it, yeah. So, there is a provision in our current zoning code that says if you have a building that exists as of 1964, the parking requirements of the code do not apply to that building. Unless you're proposing a use that's going to be 25% or more, more intense than the use that existed in 1964. And that comparison is made based on the parking requirements in the code. The 1964 parking requirements for the use in existence at that time versus the parking requirements of the proposed use. Because the applicant has reduced the scope of the application over the course of the, you know, the vetting and review of this application, the building inspector determined that based on the most recently revised plans, they now fall within that threshold to have a parking exemption, because the use that they're proposing is not more than 25% more intense than the 1964 use. I hope that was clear.
And people of Beacon, if you don't like these laws, talk to your council person. We can only, you know, assess compliance with them.
But I think also, just to clarify your question, you were asking if they're using on-street parking. And yes, they are relying on on-street parking as part of their parking requirement.
Well, that on-street's not going to be on Walcott Avenue. We know that. So, the only other comment I want to make is, the, the number was originally 398, 200, 180. I still don't think you hit the number. I think it still needs to come down. It's much too aggressive for this area. That's my comments. And the other comment is, I agree with Clark. We shouldn't be in any rush to push forward on this. Let's just keep going through this process. We have time. I don't think you're going to break ground in December. So, we have time to go through this. So, let's just keep looking at it. Let's find that right number. It's not 180. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you just like to say, Rachel Rifkin, River Ridge?
Just say it in the mic.
It does matter, okay.
No, it does matter, so that everyone can hear what you're saying.
A River Ridge, I would just like to say, if the Craig's house, if I'm still alive, when it goes through, and I still have the money, I can't wait to check myself in there. I don't know if you understand that.
I understood everything you said.
Okay. So, I can't wait. If I'm alive, I'm still in Beacon, and I have money.
We appreciate it. Any other comments?
I would love to check myself in there.
Okay. Anybody else from the public?
It's so delicious looking.
Okay. Thank you. Taylor?
I'm going to reiterate, I also am excited to stay there someday.
I'll join you.
Yeah.
If I may, to respond to Ms. Rifkin's points, though, just one of them was the mention of certificate of appropriateness. One mention, again, related to the SECR process, is that the state historic preservation office has issued a no-impact determination, that the project is appropriate, and will not have an impact on historic or cultural resources. That's related to both the church and the cemetery. So, that was one comment reflecting... that's related to both the church and the cemetery, so that was one comment reflected there, and then weddings are a component, but it's only a portion of the considered events accessory to the hotel operation.
This isn't on the national register, is it? Is there any application, any process required?
It's certainly, it's-
Is that on the national?
Church, yeah, the church is on the register.
And so is there any process or any approval process for, because of that, that you need to go through?
Yes, that was the, so the SHPO letter that I referenced, there was, there was a referral to the state historic preservation office during the SEQA process, where they issued a, what they call a no-impact determination, that the proposal by the applicant, this was the larger proposal, but the same proposal, because we're restoring and maintaining the historic church and doing a lot to preserve and further historic preservation with the development of the application, it's not just, you know, coming to the site and trying to reinvent the wheel, we're trying to preserve this church, that's, I know we spent many months early on explaining what's going on with the preservation efforts and how this operation helps to ensure that, but the state issued its letter, and that's the agency that refers and reviews it on the state's side.
And does any of that apply to the cemetery? Have you made any plans for modifying the foliage or removing brush, anything like that? Is that part of this application, or is it just the path going through the existing condition and the existing condition of this crypts and whatnot?
The state has reviewed the application, which included the connection through, and I mean, it's not-
So it doesn't include any-
Right now, it's not in, as you all have known, it's not in good condition, it has been left derelict for many decades, so-
So when you, when you-
Any improvement of that is an improvement of the conditions.
I'm only bringing this up because now you've brought up the historic part, I just want, I just wanted people to understand that there, there's no part of this where you're proposing to improve-
Cemetery, no.
Except for putting this path in and putting in fencing in some spots, right? The condition of the existing cemetery, it's going to remain in place.
Oh, yeah.
You're not making any-
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to ask a follow-on question, but what about-
But there's, there's maintenance, one could prevent the further through intrusive growth.
Sure.
Roots that are disturbing graves, things like that, if there was any, any studies that were done to preserve or, nothing was done like that, right? In order to stabilize or preserve the existing condition.
Or even just, what about just even just mowing and removal of, you know, brush?
Right, the intent is to, to make it, to better the condition, not to, not to let it stay-
You're not, you're not really bettering the condition, you're putting a path through it, you're making no proposal to do any work on the cemetery.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that clear for everybody, I mean, I'm not saying you should do it or not, I don't know, I'm just saying, there's been allusions that you're somehow preserving the cemetery, or this is somehow maintaining that historic aspect of it, and SHPO-
The state has reviewed it and said, correct, no impact.
Okay.
Okay, but just a question to take back, though, for the next, you know, round, you know, what maintenance, what kind of groundskeeping will there be in the cemetery?
We'll incorporate that into a supplemental submission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go around the board for a second, because there are a couple of things that are professionals put out, and I agree with them, regards to a sound expert consultant of our own, but Kevin, there was a specific type you spoke of?
What?
A specific type of expert acoustical engineer, what did you, you had mentioned?
There are acoustical engineers that work with buildings and environmental situations, a lot of times they work with HVAC systems and other things, I work with them just for other things that I've done, and they are specifically have expertise in environmental acoustics.
We'd certainly refer to Mr. Russo's recommendations with respect to same.
Yeah, I was going to just go to you, John.
Well, that's why I was actually considering and recommending to the board earlier the use of the consultant that developed the noise ordinance for the city, that was adopted a few years ago.
Okay, so, Jim, sorry.
So motion to-
Yeah, motion for the city to retain an acoustical engineer to perform an evaluation of the-
That's what I was about to say.
That's it.
I'd like to entertain a motion for this, for the city retain an acoustical engineer for the evaluation of this project.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's, obviously, there's a lot more work to be done, a lot more things to be looked at and listened to and studied, so for the purpose of where we are now, I'd like to have a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's pretty much what we can do for night.
And just for clarification of the record, the public hearing will be continued to the November 9th, is it 9th?
Yeah.
November 9th meeting.
Yeah.
Another Wednesday.
Make sure your signs update. That the date of the continued public hearing is November 9th.
Thank you, everybody.
And thank- The question was whether-
I think the question was whether comments can still be submitted to the board and that, yes, the public hearing is still open, so you can email the board, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item-
I mean, Mr. Acting Chair, if I may, just jump in really quick, I didn't prep, prepare, we want to say thank you, of course, for all of your time on the prior application, there is an extension request later on, you're, I know Jennifer's looking at me like you're going to kill me, it's for 364 Main Street, and I mean that, if I may, just jump ahead, it's a 90-day request, it's literally sitting on the chairman's desk, and I thought, actually it was going to be available tonight for 364 Main Street.
Your first, second, third?
It's a first request.
It's, yeah, I think it's-
And it's only, we're not even asking for six months, we're asking for 90 days, because the plat is going to be filed, I believe, probably next Monday, we'll have the signature on the plat.
So there is an extension request in your miscellaneous business items portion of your agenda-
The back of the agenda.
For 364 Main Street, O'Donnell Construction Corp., they're asking for a 90-day extension of the site plan and subdivision approval, this is their first, right, first request for an extension.
Motion?
I just want to make-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a comment that was emailed to the board, I think it was today, I saw it late today, asking about the timing of the extension, that the expiration period for this application was, I believe, October 9th.
Okay.
Obviously, it's past the expiration, but the letter requesting the extension was submitted prior to the expiration date, so you do have the authority to issue the extension, and it's applied retroactively to October 9th, so I just wanted to make that clear for the folks that submitted that comment.
So I had a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Could I just ask why you need the extension first?
We couldn't get the chair to sign it, it's been with the chair for some time.
Oh, okay. Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, John, yeah, thank you, and let's go to Mirbo.
Just trying to keep John from under the bus.
Sorry.
We're going to move on to item number-
Two, actually.
Two.
It's your two, right, three?
Three.
It's item number three, continued public hearing for SEQA environment to review an application for special use permit, site plan approval and subdivision, and open public hearing on application for special use permit, site plan approval and subdivision, Mirbo Inns and Spa at Holland Estate, 7 Craig House Lane, submitted by, I'm mispronouncing this, bear with me, Mirbo Companies. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Kellogg, I'm a partner with Mirbo Inns and Spa, and there's a few items to address tonight, we will defer to you, we didn't know if you wanted to go to the public, the SEQA issues for the public hearing and for a negative declaration, when we get into the site plan, we do want to address, you know, several items that came up in the last meeting, and our architect, David Boyce, has a presentation prepared, but we weren't certain what order you wanted to go in.
Hmm.
I would suggest addressing any SEQA issues, I think that, you had a draft negative declaration prepared for your last meeting, but there were still some open questions about visual impacts from Route 9D.
So let's, yeah, let's address the SEQA issues first.
I think there were also traffic concerns, resident, you know, traffic concerns on Grandview.
Which were, yeah, which were more site planning issues than SEQA issues, right.
Yeah, I think the only SEQA issue that was remaining was the view shed analysis that we had submitted, so I'll let David address that, or we can, we can do the whole presentation, so whatever, whatever you'd like.
I'm going to ask people to move their conversation out of the lobby.
Excuse me?
Folks in the lobby, please, can you move your conversation out of, we just need to, down the background noise so that we can, thank you.
David, why don't we just go right to the view shed?
Can we get a noise evaluation on that?
Good evening, I'm going to walk you through a little bit of the site plan and the view shed, this is the existing conditions image of the site, and our overall site plan, this is the site master plan, and we wanted to kind of talk about the, the primary area here that we're looking at right now is phase one, is really the mansion restoration, the guest rooms, the associated parking for that, five cottages, and the stabilization of some of the historic buildings on site. An enlarged area of the plan, we've worked pretty hard on this plan, hearing your comments, we built actually a model that, and worked with our landscape architect, who's here, to make sure that the plantings are correct and relevant for the, about the three-to-five year growth, and the images that you're going to see are from a model, and we'll show you a transition from the existing photo to that model, so you can see what this site plan represents, but we did want to identify, one of the things that this plan shows is a fair amount of existing trees that we're keeping, along, obviously throughout the mansion, we've catalogued the historic trees, and those are very important, but also along 9D, there's a good tree canopy along 9D, and we're keeping as much of that as possible, weeding out some of the unhealthy trees, but really maintaining the healthiest trees along that street, and I know, John, you have a question about the chestnut, and Henry can answer that question later. So this is the existing, so we have four view sheds to talk about, three along 9D and one in the, in the landscape area in the back of the mansion, these have all been filed, but we felt like it would be important to do kind of a transition slide that illustrates the current view and the transition to the, to the new, and what's important here is you can see that the mansion doesn't move, this is a view of the front entrance with the new gates, these gates have been modified, we did take a look around the Hudson Valley along different parts of Route 9, and looked at some of the historic mansions, originally we had a much more elaborate gate, we think these pillars are much more in keeping with the character of the mansion as well as the region. Sorry. This is not my laptop, by the way. Next one. A little further down 9D, this is an existing view where there was a sign, those posts will be taken out, there will be no signage in that area, as you can see, we're trying to be very careful to maintain that historic view of the mansion. The next view further down, currently, there's a view that, that some of the parking field that's there is, is visible, good view of the mansion, good view of both the hemlock as well as another large tree, this is our proposed view, and this is representative of the plantings that we have in our landscape plan. We do have the, the fourth view further in the slide deck, but those were the main view sheds of 9D, so I think Ed wanted me to stop there, so. The rest of the slides are really specific to site planning issues and access issues, but I think this was the, the view sheds were the only remaining issue for, for SEQA.
Okay, let's go around to our professionals first.
I looked at the views that were just presented, and I think they're, they're looking positive in terms of blocking any parking views and maintaining views of the mansion, so I think they've done a good job of year-round providing screening for the things you don't want to see and, and open views towards the existing views of the mansion. The only other SEQA-related things that I addressed were, it's not clear on the site plan, and there's been questions about wetlands in terms of a potential trail along the creekside, I want the flagged wetlands to be marked on the map more clearly, they overlap, they taper off, they, you know, it's not clear to me where the wetlands begin and where the wetlands end on, on your sheet two, existing conditions.
All right, but that's really, that's not part of what we're doing right now, but isn't that more of a site plan issue as opposed to a SEQA issue?
Well-
In terms of impact?
Knowing where the wetlands are is a SEQA issue, so I'm just mentioning it, I don't think that's a hard ask, to mark the wetlands more precisely on the, on the map.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll look at it.
And then there is that 36-inch horse chestnut tree, which is right out front, it's the first tree you're going to see, and when you put the turning lanes in, it looks to me like it's going to be very close to the root system, the relocated sidewalk, so if you can address that.
Yeah, we've had our arborist look at it, and they're actually going to be out there again tomorrow morning, looking at that and looking at the weeping hemlocks, which have some concern in terms of some infestation, but, yeah, and then when Colliers does the actual construction documents, you know, for the road widening, then that will be addressed, you know, so that we're protecting it, but it is close, it's actually close to the sidewalk, and everything's pushing over, but, and the sidewalk ends up falling under the tree canopy, but, you know, Henry and Colliers are going to address that.
Is there a way that you can narrow the lanes, they're 11-foot, you really don't need 11-foot turning lane, for instance, as a way of shifting that away from the sidewalk?
Yeah, Philip Greeley, again, from Colliers, for a turn lane, we could go down to 10 feet, so, again, we're working with the landscape architect to, to work the plan, the construction plan, so that we can keep away from impacting that.
All right.
But yes, that's one of the possibilities.
And there are also treatments for under sidewalks that allow root systems to fail, you know?
Correct. And those, those will all be worked into the final construction plans.
You're intending on saving that tree?
Yes.
Long-term?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it hit, I mean, the arborist, what's the proper term, Henry, the tree? It's not actually a chestnut.
It's a buckeye.
A buckeye.
Forest chestnut.
There's a few of them, two were rated as poor, remove them, because they're dying, and then this one hit a fair and protect it.
Right.
So we have to treat it.
36 inches.
It's 36, right, there's a couple 42s also on the site.
Mr. Russo?
So the applicant did perform an inflow infiltration study of the site, they found what appears to be a few roof leaders and a sun pump connected into the system, based upon stormwater events, one-year storm, you're looking at almost 26,500 gallons worth of stormwater going into the sanitary source collection system, larger storm events, a lot more water, so basically, they're going to be disconnecting all of that, you know, if you want a comparison, one-year storm event, there are over 26,000 gallons going in, their project is only expected to use a little over, or just under 19,000 gallons on a daily basis, so it's a significant amount of stormwater entering into the city's sanitary system. We still have some outstanding items with regards to stormwater, they're going to be doing more soil testing on site, so we should be able to infiltrate a lot more stormwater on the site, and then we're asking them to consider installing a walkway along Grandview Avenue, I mean, there's been a number of concerns with that, I would leave it to Stark to talk about the traffic that's being generated on Grandview from that exit, since he's a traffic consultant, but I think the applicant should kind of consider looking at that.
Yeah, this, again, I mean, we're, we're talking, I mean, SEQA covers this phase that we're talking about, and we've spoken to John about this before, we're certainly willing to consider the sidewalk as part of the future developments, you know, along Grandview, there's a farm, there's a series of cottages, there's the, you know, restoration of the Tyrone to school, but that's, you know-
I think it should be looked at this point in time, because you're going to have traffic going out to Grandview at this point, you're going to have a few cottages there to begin with, and you're going to have this access out to Grandview, so you're going to have people, I mean, I, it would be my prop- So you're going to have people, I mean, I, it would be my preference to have everybody leaving and entering on Walcott.
Oh, yeah, it's the vast majority of our traffic generating.
But you're going to have people that are going to go out to Grandview.
There will be some, there will be some, right?
So I think that should actually be looked at at this point in time.
Yeah, I mean, we've included those traffic counts in our traffic impact study.
And that's why I'm referring to the city's traffic consultant to discuss that further.
Okay, but we're, I'm not sure what their position is about that.
The traffic study that they provided did look at the traffic volumes coming out of Grandview with the introduction of the cottages that'll be built along, I think it's Mirbo Lane. There was no discussion in the traffic study about pedestrian activity along Grandview Avenue. So perhaps you could opine on pedestrian activity along the roadway and potential improvements for pedestrian access based on public comment.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we won't generate any pedestrian activity on Grandview as part of the resort development, you know, that we're talking about. In the future, when the cluster of 17 small cottages that are on the subdivision parcel, there might be, but there's really, you know, the only place they'll be walking to is down to the Tyrrhonda School. So it's not, so the only pedestrian traffic that's on Grandview right now are people who are walking on Grandview, walking their dogs, you know, it's the neighbors, you know, to the south. We're open to it, you know, we don't, it doesn't really connect to what we're doing. All of our, all of our customers are coming in by car, and they're coming in the main driveway. There will be some that, you know, might exit or enter along Mirbo Lane out to Grandview. We are actually going to put signage that says "No Commercial Vehicles," so we'll limit that. And there's, you know, five cottages that are part of this phase right here. Those people might be driving out there. There's really, it's kind of nowhere to walk to, you know, from the property.
Right, and I think what, I think what the board is getting at is that you've done a good job, you've done a great job at looking at the full build-out of the project. And I don't think you're incorrect in thinking that there won't be pedestrians using that sidewalk now with what's going to be built now in your first phase, but that it could be potentially used in the full build-out. So the investigation now could be beneficial to the board's understanding of how Grandview could act as a pedestrian walkway for the project with the expansion of the cottages on Mirbo Lane.
Yeah, again, you know, we're willing to consider it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying no. We just, it's just, it would be more part of a future phase where we'll be in front of you again for a site plan approval for the cluster of cottages, you know, Tyrrhonda, whatever we do, you know, down at the school. But, yeah, to have that part of this right now, I'm just, you know, not sure. I mean, what does the board want, you know?
So basically, we were looking at, you're generating traffic from the site. I understand when you have Phase Two and the additional cottages there, you may generate more pedestrian traffic to walk down to the school. But even during Phase One, you're going to be generating more trip traffic that's going to be going out to Grandview. And as you said, there are pedestrians walking their dogs up and down the road. So you're putting more vehic, uh, vehic, you're, I can't even say it, more vehicles on the road. You know, so there's a concern, as you heard from the residents, with regard to their safety. You know, so it needs to be looked at. What can be done now to protect those pedestrians that are walking there? I understand you're not having more pedestrians at this point. In the future, you will, but you are putting more traffic or vehicles onto that side road.
One of the things that we had in the back of the presentation that we wanted to show you was a revised plan for our driveways to manage the traffic to Grandview on Mirbo Lane. A couple of things that we're doing here are, we're changing the paving material at that road so that the main road flows traffic into the parking. We've got an idea of putting cobbles or something to kind of discourage people from turning down Mirbo Lane and being confused about where to go. The other thing that we would do is also put signage at that point, indicating that it's for service and for cottages only. So there are five cottages there. And then the third thing that we've talked about internally, and that the operations team has felt is reasonable, is to put up cones in an event where you might have a wedding or a larger event, so that people don't see that as a potential outlet. So managing that process. So we did hear that last time, and we did take that seriously as a concern, and we're trying to do that through design, to change people's.
And that's also going to be put into your traffic study reports?
Yes.
Traffic management?
Yes.
Specific to the, let me get a motion to open the public hearing for the Seeker part of this, because this is a continued.
Yeah, we're in a continued.
Okay.
Motion?
Can a second?
I think she said we don't need to.
We don't need to.
We don't need to, you can.
Okay. All right, anybody here, okay, I didn't know if they would close, whatever. Anybody here specific to Seeker for this particular application?
Good evening, Clark Edmund, 2 Wilson Street. I'd like to address the subject of segmentation and its potential deficit in the presentation. For lack of clarity, on one hand, and then the power of the planning board on the other to negotiate in return for granting special uses and these kinds of things. I have seen this discussion over the years, and more often than not, not criticism, but more often than not, I think that it's, the board's position's been rather timid to require, you know, engage in a bartering for a product that is perhaps best for the city. I mean, we, here we have a national landmark, the president's sister spent considerable amount of time here. It almost fits the mold of the Roosevelt relationships up north. And I'm not looking to blow that up. But here you have a parcel of special quality, and there's no real understanding of the operation of the, all the little parts. So we call them cottages. Are they residences? Are they bunkhouses? Do they have potential to become religious institutions? So the whole plethora of land use comes into play here, and the law does not allow for imprecision as it relates to the intent and use and operation. So here you have all these mix, and first of all, it's a lovely, lovely, very, very professionally presented plan. And I think that the goal should be to allow its creation. But the goal should not be take one of the choicest places for development housing, affordable housing, and all the other, if it remains one contiguous commercial parcel as it would appear, then there's no reason for segmentation. In fact, it would be illegal, and council would write books on it, given the opportunity to get paid for it. But be brave. It's good. These people are trained professionals that we rarely see in this community. And they've spent a lot of money to bring it to fruition. But they know the difference. And there should be no ambiguity for one square inch. You should never, never, ever break up this parcel. It should always be for the hotel industry, if this is what it's going to be used for, period. And it's a, kind of like the llama lines of what I was saying about, kind of like negotiating. Maybe they need to get a little bit of financial backstop to surrender the possibility of building 25 McMansions, okay? And maybe it's, in return, you'd say, okay, we'll tell you what, this would be an ideal site, and we'll allow you for 20 years to build another 100 rooms over here. What I'm trying to say is, recognize the quality of their investment. Recognize that they have, they're making a risk. That we want to encourage, Beacon wants to encourage quality investment in hospitality industry. But we're not interested in turning it into a mixed-use condominium project that kind of like morphs and the political vicissitudes and changes that occur over time. Be firm. And I believe that these people will deliver a product that we can all recognize with long-term certainty, that it's a genuine tax, hotel tax, commercial tax generating epicenter for the hospitality industry and Beacon that we all could be proud of. But be clear on what's really being allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here from the public?
Hi, Thomas Wright. I'm the chair of the Greenway Trail Committee. I just wanted to make a quick comment. First, related to the discussion about a possible walkway along Grandview Avenue, and just to include in the discussion or in the thinking about who those users might be, that it's not just the applicant's guess, but once the Tyrrhonda Bridge opens, for example, users of the Fuhr Trail or users going between the Fuhr Trail and the Greenway Trail and the university settlement and the host of trail connections that that affords. So actually, it came up a little bit last month, and I think it is something that needs to be explored carefully in terms of the importance of that connectivity for the community. In addition to that, I just wanted to reiterate our desire to keep an option for a public trail across the property open and to engage in further conversation with the applicant with that goal in mind. The mayor and city administrator have taken the lead in communication with the applicant, so I don't know further details about their intent at this time. But I will be meeting with them on Friday, and that will be on our agenda. From what the mayor told me, the applicant offered to walk the trail to review opportunities and challenges of a trail along the sewer easement. That came up in September's meeting. I think a site walk is a great idea and would undoubtedly, and would undoubtedly lead to further productive conversations about how the goals of the city may mesh with the goals of the applicant. Regardless, it has been the experience of the committee that any such conversations will evolve over time. At this point, I don't know if or how. Our desire for dialogue impacts the proceedings of this board in regards to the application. I will say that our committee appreciates very much the attention that you have given the Greenway Trail in general and your openness to discussing the issue of a public trail at this property in particular. Well, thank you for your time and consideration. And if there are any questions for, that you want to direct towards me and the committee, I'd be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here from the public specific to Seeker? Okay, so I'm going to go around the board first, leave the public hearing open for a second.
Okay. Well, on the subject of the Greenway Trail, I encourage the applicant to pursue that as, if nothing else, an amenity to be included with the experience of your guests, that it fits in nicely with the whole, the very strong natural approach that you have to the landscape and the experience there. I think, and the water, that you have all these water features. There's nothing like walking along flowing water, observing that, and the falls and everything. So that'd be great, if that could happen. I think that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I agree with Jill's request that there be an ongoing dialogue between the applicant and the Greenway Trail Committee about what could be accomplished. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate and thank the Greenway Trail Committee for all the work they've done over the years to improve the quality of life in Beacon. And I think that we have, if we can do things to assist improving pedestrian connectivity with these trails, which everybody appreciates and are heavily used in this town, we should, we should try to do that.
I agree with my colleagues' comments. I think the sidewalk along Grandview is an important traffic safety measure considering the increase in cars that will be generated along that road there. I appreciate the design efforts that you went into for, you know, directing people to the main entrance. You know, but I think short of a gate, you know, if someone wants to drive that way, you know, unless perhaps the cones are there, they will. So I would encourage, I agree with John Russo, and I would encourage the sidewalk to be considered at this stage of the game. And then on a minor issue with one of the views, could you go to the second view from 9D, the southern view on 9D? Your proposed view. I think a very low planting on, to mask the circle driveway, the asphalt, from this perspective, something that's in the 18-inch, you know, 24-inch to soften the impact of the driveway in the view, I would encourage. That's it.
Perfect, thank you. Just quickly going back to the public to see if there's anybody else on the Seeker component of this application. Okay, so applicant, I'll let you address some comments, but what I wanted to do is just everybody go around the board and looking to close the Seeker public hearing at this point. Are we comfortable with that? Can I, can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Get a second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, did you have any comments to what was, yeah, so to respond to that?
Yeah, I just, Dan Leary, attorney for the applicant. I just wanted to say that almost everything I heard tonight with comments regard future phases. And I would just want to respectfully remind the board that those will have to go through a site-specific process when and if we have a design for them. They were put in as conceptual plans as part of the request, you know, by the board's lead agency and the council, just to show what could possibly take place there. So in terms of the walking trails, the sidewalk, the phase that would take place down Grandview Avenue, that all has to come back for a subsequent review, which would have an associated SECR review. So we're not, we're not really seeing these as immediate issues for SECR right now. We can discuss them as part of site plan review and, you know, keep dialogues open with committees. But we're not necessarily seeing any of this as pertinent to the determination under SECR that the board is now tasked with making.
I was going to say, I'm tempted by you, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, so I, I agree, however, I think that, you know, as the board explained, you know, their comments tonight with. know, their comments tonight with respect to the walkway on Grand View, I think we've heard from the board's consultants and the board itself that that walkway on Grand View is an important component of the site planning issues for Phase One because of that access onto Grand View and the fact that there will be additional vehicular traffic on Grand View. We've heard testimony from the public that it's highly used by pedestrians currently, and to add additional traffic just adds, you know, additional risk there. I agree that it's not necessarily a SECR issue, it's more of a site planning issue that we can deal with, you know, as we move forward with the application on the site planning stage. And as far as the, you know, the future phases go and its relation to SECR, yes, they are included in your SECR review, the cottages, the garden, those Phase Two elements, on a conceptual level. So the applicant has represented that they don't have any concrete definitive plans for those future phases at this time, but that they are included in your SECR review at a, you know, conceptual, generic level, so that we can, you know, so that we don't run afoul of the SECR's mandate against segmentation. So if we were to separate those, those reviews, the concept that Mr. Guedman raised during his comments, we would, we would be segmenting the environmental review of those two phases. But that's not what's happening here.
That's not what happened, okay. Understood. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just, I want to address a couple of things. The gentleman was talking about segmentation. Every single submission we've had has shown you the whole picture, so there is no segmentation. If we hadn't shown you, then there would be segmentation. These are all rentals, you know, there's no ownership, we've clarified that before. This is all part of the hospitality use, you know, everybody will be one of our guests, no matter what dwelling they're in on the property. There's no ownership, no timeshares, you know, nothing like that.
No plan to convert them into individual religious shrines and therefore get them off the tax rolls?
No, no, none of that. It, it is not a national landmark. You know, we're going through our approvals with SHPO right now for the historic designation, but it is not a national, it's not any type of landmark right now. So we're going through that whole process right now. And we've hired, you know, Carolyn Coppola is her name, and she's going through the whole review process with SHPO, and I think it ties in the National Park Service as well in some respect. Yeah, another thing with the, the Greenway Trail, I did, you know, this was before our last meeting here, I met with the mayor and the city administrator, I offered to walk the site with them to look at the challenges, not the opportunities, okay? But we are willing to consider, you know, continuing that dialogue. We have a slide which we should share with you, showing the challenges. I mean, this is, it's in the wetlands, there's archaeological sites, which you can't, you know, dig into, there's ownership issues north of our property, off of, off of the property, there's been no discussions with the city and any of those five property owners, there's three private residences and a couple of commercial properties. You can see the, the red dash line, that's the sewer line, it's, you know, it crosses wetlands and it crosses, you know, it crosses archaeological sites, so there is a tremendous amount of challenges, you know, with, with anything on our side of the river. The west side of the river already has a Greenway Trail, already has agreements with property owners, it's already part of the zoning designation on the west side of the river, and since the mayor brought this up to the Greenway Trail Committee a few years ago, now the railroad line's gonna be abandoned, so there's another opportunity for a trail. And anything coming through our site, you know, there's, like I said before, there's a liability issue, and it doesn't really connect with anything, because there's nothing to the north that's under agreement, and to the south, you know, I guess you could potentially end up at Grand View, but it doesn't, you know, but again, it goes back to the bridge. So we're willing to continue the conversation. Yeah, and then, the landscaping across, along the driveway, we went through this with John, we had landscaping that we removed because that landscaping was moderate in size, and it would have blocked the view of the, of the mansion. So, you know, we could put short bushes in, but, you know, we're open to that, we can look at that during site plan review as well.
I only objected to the trees that were in that area, not the low landscaping, but...
We can add low landscaping, yeah. We can do all the landscaping, when we're done, John can inspect it, and if he wants more, we'll put more in, you know? And you could do that prior to the CO being issued, you know, we're, we've done that before, we're willing to do that. With the sidewalk on Grand View, I'll commit right now that we'll build a sidewalk on Grand View down to the corner of South Ave. When you get past South Ave, it doesn't really go anywhere, it would pick up all the neighbors that, you know, are on the south side of Grand View, and I can't think of the name of the street that comes off of Grand View at the intersection of South Ave, but, you know, that's where the south gatehouse is, is right down by that intersection, so we can, you know, we'll, we will commit to building that portion of it like right now, you know, to address any impact of the Seeker. If that's far enough, and then I guess during future phases, with the Tyrrhonda School, or with the development of the cluster of cottages, and we could look at the rest of it, and it kind of, you know, goes back to the question, what's gonna happen with the bridge? You know, 'cause that sidewalk would really go nowhere.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay. So, respect to Seeker.
Sure, so you have before you a draft of the Part Two, which is the EAF part that you can use as your tool to assess the significance of the relevant impacts, so that was distributed to you for your last meeting. You also have before you a draft of the Part Three, which is the determination of significance, and it's been filled out as a negative declaration, meaning there's no significant adverse environmental impacts, and it has the attachment with the reasoning which goes through the information that's been submitted to you and the record, it's, you know, nine or so single space pages that goes through the analysis of each relevant environmental impact. One edit I want to suggest, and I have a question I want to clarify, on the page six, on the historic and archaeological resources, so there are, we talked there about the Harken Report that was done back in 2006, that inventoried all, inventoried all of the archaeological sites and the historic buildings on the site, the buildings that are eligible for listing on the state and national registers. We do make a statement in here that some of those, some of the buildings that still remain are to be preserved in the proposed condition, and we have in there now the, the Tyrrhonda Craig House Sanitarium, which I understand, based on the Harken Report, is the mansion building, the south gatehouse and the school, but I think also the north gatehouse is proposed to remain. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the north gatehouse is not, that was never the gatehouse. The north gatehouse is actually along the property line at the far north, there's actually a land bridge that goes over it, that's the Bennett Cottage, but that was included in the Harken Report. But that's not the north gatehouse.
I think it's fair to say, though, that any, any of the historic, any of the structures that are eligible for listing that were reviewed in the Harken Report that still remain on the property
Right.
are going to remain and are gonna be preserved. I think that, that's the point that we're trying to make.
Right, and that's one of the things that our historic architect is looking at, is that Bennett Cottage, I mean, what is it, what was it? You know, we don't even know when it was built, it just appeared in a plan one year, but, but the other, the other structures that are included in that report, between 2009 and 2013, they were either demolished, or they deteriorated, had to be turned down 'cause of safety, so they're not there anymore.
The carriage house is gone, that's for a fact.
The what?
The carriage house, for example.
Carriage house, greenhouses, you know, there was beautiful cottages, you know, down on Craig House Lane is what it was, but...
Yeah, the carriage house was beautiful, too.
Okay, so just with that, that clarification made, I would just, you know, recommend that we make that clarification in the, in the negative declaration, but otherwise, unless you have any other edits, you can entertain a motion to adopt the negative declaration.
You got the, that was where, you got the email that I...
I did, yes, yep, absolutely.
So I'll entertain that motion with the edits as laid out.
Motion.
And second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries in the next.
Thank you.
Now...
So, now you can entertain a motion to open...
The public hearing, that's what it was actually, so I entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the site plan?
And subdivision.
And subdivision.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that also included the discussion of use permit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, especially, yeah, that's right.
And related to the site plan, I'll call up David again, and there was just some issues, you know, some neighbors, neighbors made comments. Phil spoke with, with Creighton Manning today about their comment letter with left-hand turn southbound to go into the settlement camp, and also the crosswalk, but I guess we can pull up, you know, David, do you want to address the crosswalk slide? I can talk to it if you, if we pull it up. So, in front of the site, and it was included on the site plan, we have the left-hand turn northbound, and we looked at, you know, where is the crosswalk going over to the settlement camp? There's some speed issues, there are some sightline issues, there's gonna be all of the crosshatching and striping for the left-hand turn, so to introduce a crosswalk in the middle of all that, Colliers looked at this, thought it was dangerous. We looked at north of it, across from the Bennett Cottage, you're going through, you're going through some more striping, but you kind of end up in a ditch. There's really, it doesn't go anywhere, there's no sidewalk on the east side of 9D. So the yellow little rectangle at the north is actually the north entrance into the settlement camp, and that has signage that says settlement camp. So you could walk into there, and the sidewalk for, on the whole west side is right there existing. So it, anybody walking is gonna be coming from the population density to the north, so this will be their first available spot to enter the settlement camp. You know, they'll have to walk a little bit longer, you know, to get to the pool, or to get to the settlement camp, or the Frisbee Park, but we thought that was the safest spot, and traffic is at thirty miles an hour in both directions right there. And then we also, there was a comment from Creighton Manning about looking at a left-hand turn lane, south of our northbound left-hand turn lane, to get into the settlement camp. And it's, it's kind of difficult to see here, but, but yeah, why don't we pull this up? So what Phil Greeley did is came up with this quick plan this afternoon after they spoke, and we show, it's hard to, we don't really have, oh, you do have a cursor, yeah. So you can see there's a left-hand turn southbound, which brings you into the south driveway of the settlements camps, you know, they have like a Y entrance right there, it brings you into the south driveway, it doesn't bring you into the north. But this, we think, is the safest spot and the most convenient for people going into the settlement camp or the Frisbee Park. So that was a comment we made, and, you know, we can have further discussions, you know, with Creighton Manning about whether that makes sense. If you're leaving and heading north, yeah, then you, it's easy to use that north wing. If you're leaving and heading south, then you will go out the south. So probably with some signage, you know, within the settlement camp, there already is some, and that can be, you know, that can be addressed. But we think get the crosswalk, the crosswalk needs to get, it's not important to us, it's not part of our guest amenity, it just, we need to get it away from everything that's occurring around this entranceway, which is why the north makes sense. And that's where the pedestrians are coming from. I think that was maybe the last site plan issue? Right? Yeah, there's, John Russo has a bunch of engineering comments, which we'll address in our next submission, obviously, but...
John, you ready?
I'm, you know, relatively pleased by the changes to the turning lane. I think that's important to have an exit over to the, to the settlement camp there. I did raise, and I do agree on this, on the crosswalk, and I don't know, I haven't seen your letter yet, so I don't know what she said about crosswalks, but I think it might be better to have them further, further north, a crosswalk. I think there needs to be a crosswalk to the settlement camp from the west side sidewalk, so I thought it, the sidelines were best at the Clearwater entrance rather than the north entrance, but I'll defer to Stark on that. I did raise a couple architectural issues, and I don't know if we want to get into those, but, you know, we haven't looked at the, any architectural concepts for the cottages that are part of Phase One, and, and the materials list was a little vague, particularly the stone panels were sort of vertical in orientation on your site plan drawings, your architectural building drawings.
Well, we, we have...
And they should be more horizontal, so they look like they're laid stone rather than, you know, plucked veneer.
So that's the stone, and we can pull up the elevation.
And is it real stone?
It is, it is real stone, that is actually the style of stone that we want to use, that Ashler cut stone look, it's very consistent with some historic images we've seen, and what you can actually see of the foundation of the mansion. So maybe some of our mapping of our materials on these renderings is not perfectly exact, but that is our stone that we're looking at.
All right, so it looks more like horizontally lain stone
Absolutely.
rather than vertically applied stone.
Correct.
That's the important point, and it's, the code requires real stone rather than artificial stone.
Yeah, and the comment, you know, we did look at, you know, several different stones, including a more of a field stone, a more rugged, natural-looking, and we just didn't feel it was in keeping with the character of the design.
All right, as long as it looks like local stone, I think it, you know, I'm not sure the color...
Yeah, we were looking at, there's a historic photo of the mansion that we had found at the Historic Society, and you can see at the base of the Richard Morris Hunt Edition, there's, used to be some of that stone that said in more of the Ashler pattern, and so the goal with how we're using stone, especially at the garden side and at that interior courtyard side, which really isn't visible from the public, is to emulate that stone that used to be there and really play off of that history. And then I think, John, your last question on the fiber cement, we would like to leave a textured fiber cement open for us, we've got two, we have two places that we're using fiber cement and proposing it, one is on that new chateau ring, and we're, there we would definitely use the smooth fiber cement, that area, the trim pieces of the fiber cement is, is used to frame out the windows, give it some depth, and really kind of accentuate the windows. The second place that we're proposing the fiber cement to be used is at the meeting room, which is really where it's coming off of the end of the mansion, right here, above the grotto rooms, and there we are looking at a much more highly durable fiber cement, it's not your typical fiber cement siding that goes on residential buildings, and we're looking at a simulated stone. We're not quite happy with the color right now from Nietzsche House, we're looking at warming it up, but it's, it's three-quarters of an inch thick, it has a durability, guests can come up and touch it, and it comes in larger panels that really look like stone, again horizontally arranged.
It's also a tuck-in group material, so that it doesn't have a lot of ugly seams that we would have to deal with, so, but other than that, your comment about textured, the other fiber cement is smooth, it's used in more as a trim, more to accentuate the windows.
Yeah, I just, I don't want fiber cement that looks like vinyl siding.
Yeah, no, or no fake wood either.
Okay.
Russo?
As Mr. Kellogg said, I have a number of engineering comments, I've been in touch with their engineering consultant, they've been going through it, a lot of cleanup on the, I'm sorry, thank you, John, a lot of cleanup on the plans itself, and some revisions to the engineer's report for water and sewer, and they will need to go to the Department of Health for both water and sewer approvals.
Okay. Just go around the board here and start with you.
I don't have any comments at the moment.
We've got a lot more going, Kevin?
Yeah, we'll talk about this in more detail later, I think.
No, no questions right now, thanks.
Jill?
No, looks good, no comments.
Any?
And several of you, I think we had a good productive session with the Architecture Review Board, whatever that was, a few weeks ago, and we've left these samples in the Building Department office for people to come up and touch them, and, but we basically shared, you know, these panels and the elevations that David just presented with everybody.
John, you got my notes from that, right? You got the notes I emailed to you from that session?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I copied them to Amanda, so there, you should be able to access them.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
What was that?
The ARB had some comments that they forwarded to John.
Okay.
There was also a few letters that were submitted from a few neighbors to the, the north end of the property, and, you know, just like we talked about before, these concept plans, they're not cast in stone, so he was concerned about the, the little tail of a trail that's up there, yeah, we can work with that, and that's not, doesn't need to be right there, yeah.
Yeah, I think farther away from the rear property lines would be better.
We were kind of following the contours, so if you had good hiking shoes on, you could get down there, you know, but pulling it south, you know, we can just traverse across and, and work with the grades. I think that was the only, there was three letters referencing the same issue.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the public that wants to make an initial comment with respect to the site plan.
Excuse me, I would like to just, like, one.
Yeah, I'm coming back to you.
Okay, I'll come back.
Yeah, just wanted to see if anybody was out there, because I normally like to go there first. Okay.
Okay.
Regarding our comments that you brought up, the crosswalk, the logical terminology for it makes sense, I think a study still needs to be done, looking at speed and site distance, and then for the extra turn, or for the southbound left turn lane, we'll look at the plan that Phil sent over, we haven't had a chance to fully digest it, but they're both good starts.
Yeah, we haven't done traffic counts, I mean, I, I've been, you know, you've all been here a lot longer than me, but I'm there always during the week, and I might, I might be there three or four hours at a time and just see one car, so we don't have any traffic counts at that driveway, we don't know how many people are leaving or coming, but it probably doesn't matter, you know, they need to get in there one way or another.
Yeah, it's, it comes down to you can cross the hatching, but you want to make it, you want to make it, I wouldn't say easy, but able for people to do it, but with the crosswalk, I think what's going to be important is just doing that study that's going to look at site distance.
Yeah.
And look at speeds, because it's, it's going to be a new crosswalk regardless.
Right.
And we just want to figure out those determining factors, so I think the location makes sense, but let's just confirm it.
Yeah, okay.
So, I guess at this point, we're obviously, we're going to leave, leave the public hearing open.
Right.
We got a lot more work to do, so just a motion to continue the public hearing.
To November ninth.
To November ninth.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And one last thing, sorry, before, do we need to schedule another ARB for the cottages? Or is that still too far out for the?
Well, you know, we have, we have time to do, we could do it, you know, I don't think, we don't have it actually formulated yet, but it's up.
We should wait, well, when you're ready, and so then we'll wait until you have, until you're ready to present, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense, you know, just, yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we should, we'll be prepared to submit elevations with the next submission for this.
So, we could do like a November ARB, and we can schedule it after the November meeting, because it usually follows.
Okay. Do you want us to leave these here, I'll, I'll bring them back downstairs tomorrow, sometime, or, all the samples? They've been in the Building Department, I don't know if Bruce wants them to clutter up his office.
You're welcome. Anybody want to see them before they, they'll be good?
I wouldn't, there's, there's another set of samples from Cross Street that I think are in the Building Department.
That's, that's them.
What's that?
That's, those are them.
We actually have, you know, growing samples for others. Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing them, if I have an opportunity to look at them.
Yeah, so you have to leave them, yeah.
Tomorrow morning, and I'll bring them back down.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
All right. Oh, okay. I don't want to make any, if it's a, if it's a big, I don't want to impose too much. I love them out here. Oh, okay.
We're going to move on to item number four, continued public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval, accessory apartments, Apartments 281 Rambout Avenue, submitted by Marie, Mary Ann Corso.
Be free.
Randall, I just want to mention for the record that since your last meeting, the City Council adopted legislation regarding accessory dwellings, so this particular application is actually only subject to site plan review now, doesn't require a special use permit.
Okay.
So, that portion of the application has dropped off, but you still have a public hearing on the site plan, yeah.
All yours, Susan.
Special use permit.
Rambout?
Yeah.
Oh, it fell off the gen?
No, no, it's just no longer requiring this.
Oh, okay, yeah, because of accessory, yeah.
Good evening, J.C. Calderon, Calderon Architecture and Design, the client.
Mary Ann Corso.
Just use the mic.
Mary Ann Corso.
Thank you.
So, just want to say, now that you've gone through two simple projects, I'm sorry to bring to you a complicated, controversial project, so bear with me. We, we are the applicants for 281 Rambout Avenue, we received the, the latest letters from Mr. Clark, Mr. Russo, we, so what we did, so Mr. Russo's letter states that basically all our, his previous comments had been addressed, and he mentioned the September 19th adopted revision to this section of the code regarding accessory apartments.
That would be Mr. Clark's letter.
I'm sorry, that's Mr. Clark's letter, right, and he's indicated that, that our proposal is also compliant within that revised zoning, but we're also complying, and, we're also complying in the, in the previous zoning, which is still in effect. With Mr. Russo's letter, which we received last week, we did update, there were two comments on the front page, the area plan was, had a glitch, and so we, we added the, we revised that glitch, which you could see there with the area plan, parcel access, and then the other comment or concern was the utility plan not having a protection for the, for the cleanout, which is in the area of the parking, so the, the, our, our engineer, Mr. Burns, has added this detail, and that's also been already submitted to the city, and it's also on, online, so those are the two comments, we hope that that might be enough to address any concerns, and we at this time would, would hope that you would, yeah, that's it, consider possibly.
So, who's going to, John?
Yes, as Jennifer said, the, the council adopted a new provision for accessory apartments, there were two sort of lingering questions about this application, both of those are now satisfied by the new provisions in the accessory apartment law, there, there's a 200-foot minimum size rather than the 300-foot minimum size, there's the, the size of the accessory building is now based on the full square footage of the house rather than the footprint, and it's 50% rather than 40%, so everything on this application complies with the new law, and as far as I can tell, the new law is in effect because it was filed on the official website of the Secretary of State yesterday, I believe, so the only problem is, is you're going to have to change the tables to comply with the new law, so that when the final sign-off is, it will be based on the new law, so you'll have to put this total square footage of the house rather than the footprint, you'll have to put in 50% rather than 40, you'll just have to change the tables.
Right.
To be compliant with the new zoning.
But if we wanted to maintain the application with the old zoning, because we do have the 300 square footage, we're, we're 306.
I know, but the new zoning is in effect now, and so any, anything that's approved after that zoning went into effect has to comply with the new zoning, not the old zoning, so I believe the, the motion, the resolution can go forward with the condition that you change the tables to update to the new standards.
Right.
Before it's signed.
But we, we won't be prejudiced by the fact that there's a new zoning law, because we applied before the zoning law, so we should be able to proceed with our application.
No, you, no, pending applications aren't like grandfathered in under the old zoning, the zoning applies as of today, so, but it's not an issue, because you comply, so the zoning actually helped you, and all John Clark is saying is that the tables will have to be updated with the, you know, correct figures to conform to today's zoning, but there's not an issue as to whether or not you comply, it's just updating the tables.
And just for the record, this draft's zoning law has been in place and under discussion for over a year, so there wasn't any changes to address specific applicants, because there's two applications pending on accessory apartments, this was, this draft was in place and being negotiated for the last year, so it was well before any decisions are made on these pending applications tonight.
Mr. Russo?
So, as Mr. Calderon pointed out, I did have a concern with protection of the cleanout since it was in the driveway, and with regards to the missing block on the cover sheet, I know I received an email today with updated drawings, I haven't had a chance to review it, but these are just minor comments that can be addressed later.
Just go around the board real quick.
No concerns, no comments.
No comments.
So, just, not to be, just to clarify this, oh, I see where it says, it's in your, it's in your notes, that it's on your, on your title sheet is what you're going to have to, where it says code of the City of Beacon, and it reiterates the, that's what's going to have to be updated, right, John?
All right, yeah, if, if there's anything.
Just on sheet one of five, I guess, where it says code of the City of Beacon, and it's got.
And also the zoning table that they got up on the screen right there.
Yeah, it doesn't look like, I bet, like, this is not my, it just doesn't look like there's any criteria in that table, it's just all the, you know.
Well, it says it has the owner occupied, it has the.
Not on that table.
Not on the table, but in the text it does.
Yeah, the, the title sheet, so, and I'm just only, I'm only looking, going into this because J.C. seemed a little bit perplexed by the request, but I think that the zoning information table, it's just facts, lot size, lot area, you know, setbacks, minimum lot width, it doesn't say anything about the, it doesn't have criteria for the comparison of the square footage of the accessory dwelling to the house or anything like that.
It does.
Okay, well, you, you know better than I.
Yes, and it has.
I mean, it lists habitable floor areas, but it doesn't list criteria for comparison. Oh, wait, there, it's maximum cumulative square feet for all accessory buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's where, so that's like, it's that column, J.C. Yeah, just to reflect the current law, so it's just a type, type in the new numbers.
The front setback is changed in that district, things like that.
All right, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Man, Jim?
No comments.
Okay, anybody from the public here for this application? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, in the last meeting, you did not direct a resolution to be prepared for tonight, but because of the minor nature of this application, what I would suggest is you could make a motion to approve the application tonight, subject to the standard conditions that we always put in every, you know, accessory apartment resolution, included in those conditions is the, the rec fee for an additional dwelling unit, there'll be a recreational fee that, that has to be imposed before CO, and you can authorize the chairman to sign that resolution, you know, once it's drafted after tonight.
And the modifications that with respect to?
To the table, those would be, yes, standard conditions are comments from John Clark and comments from John Russo's office.
Right, one of the other conditions that are in the new zoning is, they can't be, these accessory apartments can't be used for short-term rentals.
Okay.
Things like that have changed, so the applicant should just look at those and summarize those in text, and I assume the documents will include those conditions as well.
So, we ready to entertain the motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Bye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the applicant will not have to come back?
Correct.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
It hasn't been a fun process, but I very appreciate it.
Hopefully educational.
We're moving on to items.
These accessory apartments will be a little easier, I'm in the new law.
If so, for other people going through.
We're going to move on to item number five on the agenda, continued public hearing on application for site plan approval, Artis Studios, 5 Henry Street, submitted by Michael Brandon.
Good evening, good evening, Mike Gillespie from Gillespie Associates, consulting engineer for the project, with me tonight is Mr. Michael Braden. I've been before the board, I think the last at least two months, I presume the board is pretty familiar with what's proposed and the location, all that good stuff. I know that we had a public hearing that was opened last month, it was adjourned, and I, my understanding is the reason it was adjourned is because we need to get a sit-down with the Architectural Subcommittee, which happened between now and then, that went fairly well, I know there were some concerns regarding the signage and so forth, but again, as, as pointed out in one of the comment letters, from the review consultants, that's typically something that's handled by, by building, so I've, I've taken a look at, you know, the review letters that I received, I think last week, from Mr. Clark and Mr. Russo, they seem to be fairly minor in nature, some cleanup things, but all in all, that's the quick rack up, wrap-up, if we could proceed tonight relative to the potential closing of a public hearing and move forward, that would be great, I think that's the, the quick and dirty.
Okay, let's start with the, this is a public hearing, is anybody here from the public regarding to this applicant? Okay. But in the meantime, we can start with you.
Okay, there are a bunch of labeling and things that have to be cleaned up, but I won't go through those. I have some new information, I talked to the city administrator today about street trees.
Yep.
Because it was a question about what the process was for city approving these things, and, and despite what you heard from the tree advisory committee, the, the city administrator would like to avoid grates in the future.
Okay.
They've just been a total maintenance problem for the city, and so they don't want, he doesn't want, and this, you know, the tree advisory committee. And so they don't want, he doesn't want, and this, you know, the tree advisory committee is an advisory committee and.
Understood.
The administration is saying, no, we do not want grates. They would prefer tree wells planted flush to the sidewalk.
Okay.
And with perennial plants and, you know, if you need the extra width of the sidewalk, you could do granite blocks or something like that that are permeable.
Okay.
But they don't want grates, they want flush to the sidewalk with plantings if possible.
Yeah, certainly from a design consideration, you know, give the people what they want, whatever you'd like will provide.
Yep, and then the other two points that he made were in terms of tree species. There's a provision, it actually says in the code in, under someplace in the, in the administrative code, that it has to be indigenous species, native species, not, you know, exotics or, you know.
Okay.
So, and if there are no wires, he understands wires, you have to put in low, low trees, but wherever there aren't wires, he would like canopy trees, things that actually full out and overreach the street and that sort of thing. And so the two trees on Henry, I don't think have wires.
Right.
That would affect that, so they could be.
They do.
Henry has, Henry has both communication wires that are very low.
Okay.
And high transmission lines up above.
All right.
So both, that's why we went where we did.
All right, well then, do what you can with, under the wire in terms of species, but try to find native species that you can designate.
In terms of, I guess, one of the questions came up too, in terms of maintenance of those trees, because they end up in the, in the right of ways. Is that, is that a city maintenance issue or is that a applicant maintenance issue?
He talked about for the first two years.
Yeah, the code requires a guarantee for the first two years, that the tree will survive for the first two years.
Yep.
That's pretty standard, but then after that, it's city maintenance.
Okay. Okay. Is there any bonding that's put up with all those things or anything like that or?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's probably the preferred route to put up, yeah, maintenance bond for the two years.
I mean, it's just a tree, tree, so it's not out of control, but understood. Okay.
I just have a few cleanup comments that Mike has to work through. But Mike, one of the comments that I have, number four, with regards to the MW, that's...
I, I got ahold of the surveyor. I didn't get a clear answer. I went out there before this meeting to see if anything popped out relative to, there's, there's a lot of MWs on the plan along.
Along Henry Street.
Along Henry Street, and, and there's nothing there. So it will come off the plan.
Okay. With regards to the planting schedule, you know, we were looking for the number of shrubs to be planted, and all I got was a gallon or whatever. I mean, typically a shrub may come in a one gallon container, three gallon container. It's usually one individual. I'm looking for the total number of shrubs.
Yeah, I, I know what you need. It's pretty self, it's pretty standard, so we'll get you what you need for that. Yeah.
That's all I have at this point.
Joe?
One other thing, sorry, I was on the back page, I forgot. The architectural review subcommittee met with the applicant and six action items were identified for further consideration. So I wasn't at that subcommittee meeting. I'm not sure how it was left in terms, are you going to meet again on this? Are those action items being incorporated in the site plan?
Can you remind me of those? Otherwise I'm going to go into my email and open up the notes. And that's probably, you know, I took minutes from the, from the ARB meeting because John couldn't be present, and I think I identified actions. I want to be cautious about how I describe those in terms of, you know, obligations by people to deal with them. I might have just been.
I swore I printed them out, but I don't see them.
Yeah, my, my impression was, well, they, they passed it on back to the committee here and did not require another review by the ARB.
I can think of one thing that might be an action. Like, we had, we had talked about, you know, Kevin had made the comment during that meeting that there was a couple of, it seemed like there was a couple of different major themes in the design, and, and we, we had talked about, you know, could the architect take another look at making them cohere into a sort of unifying, you know.
Right.
overarching kind of third thing.
Yeah.
So I think we were expecting to see some tweaks. I, you know, you want to go ahead, it was your, you know, it was your comment, so.
And like I said, when we're in the architectural review committee, you know, it's much more of a conversation that we're having, and it's more general. It's not about specific code requirements, it's about the general aesthetic and how you, obviously, you know, you've worked very hard on this, and we weren't, I, I personally didn't want to over, have a design by committee thing happen, but I was, I was noting that there were a lot of different things happening. There was a vintage sign, vintage signage, and this kind of, I call it like a Frank Gehry sort of Santa Monica composition on the.
Right, the roof, the roof monitor.
The roof monitors, you know, and some other things, all of which personally I have no problem with as long as it coheres, but I just wanted to see if that was, that was part of the concept that you had, right?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the concept, the, as, as you called the roof monitors, the skylight wells were, you know, a reflection, you know, playing off the mansard slope and a little piece of that. I needed the height and stuff, but it, it seemed to bring some character to the building and some emphasis to the, to the corner. And the, the screen in the front is, you know, to bring some vegetation to a street that has, I think it's about 18 wires that run across the side of it. And, you know, some color. What we did address, I mean, part of the comment was also that the, on, on the sign, there was a different script and that, so we, we did change that. We sent some images because there was concern about visibility of the sign, and we did, I think, four or five camera views, 3D rendering camera views from Chestnut all the way down through there, and it's virtually visible from every angle.
Yeah, I think.
So the telephone pole doesn't really, really interfere with that. We did change the script and.
Yeah, Kevin gave like a specific, a specific example of, of an idea in how to, to, to make some of the elements cohere, and that was, you know, would, would there be consideration, for example, of using a mesh material as the backdrop for the neon sign, which would then kind of connect it to the, you know, to the, the.
Yeah, we looked at that, we talked to the sign, sign people, and there's a lot of guts to the thing. So you prefer, you see all that stuff, where this kind of cleaned it up and simplified it.
I had a question that we didn't talk about at the ARB, but in looking at the building since that meeting, we, we talked, during the ARB, we talked about how the neon sign was meant to be evocative of kind of traditional Studebaker dealership signage because of the original use of the building.
Yeah.
And on the, the north-facing facade has that built-up, you know, wooden awning over the garages, right? You know, if you agree with what I'm describing, in the existing conditions.
Oh, the existing.
Existing conditions, not the, not the proposed design. There is a.
That was at it after.
And so when you, when you look at the corner of Chestnut and Henry, there's some faded white paint, and I don't know if anybody has had any capability to look under there. I meant to contact the historical society, maybe I'll be able to do it tomorrow. I was curious to see whether there were any historic photos of the Studebaker dealership when it opened, but I had this question of, if that's, I assume that's going to be pulled off during the renovation of the building.
Yeah.
What if you, if you find sign elements, whether it is painted on the brick or whether there might be something more than that, would you consider, or and could we collectively consider whether that would spur any tweaks to the design elements as you've proposed to incorporate, you know, or preserve? And it's, it's a big, it's a big what-if, because there's no, we don't know what's under there.
Huge what-if, and it's behind the green screen.
Yeah, I know, I know.
This is the thing, and this is just, we were batting ideas around, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I get it.
Take this or leave this, but if you found, what would they call it? Now I can't remember, there's, there's a fancy term.
Plumbus.
The, the plant, you know, this, this faded signage behind it.
Yeah.
The easiest thing to do would be to leave it, and until the screen, the greenery made its way up there, you would see it through a screen that you had applied over it, and it would add some sort of.
I have no problem with that. You know, I, I just, given the shape of the building.
Yeah.
I, if there's something there and it's preserved, you know, I have, I have no issue with that.
And, and it's part of the way that you're already doing this, which is a series of things laid over each other. There's an existing building, there's screening, there's planting, there's signage, there's all sorts of things that sort of make a kind of a, an assembly, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I'm, I'm willing to leave it up to you, because obviously you're ambitious, you know, for, and, and you want this to be expressive. We don't have a historic requirement right there, and it's a town that has a lot of, you know, artistic.
I got a comment on the signage.
A lot of creative people here.
Yeah.
I'm welcoming this kind of crazy effort on your part myself.
How much and all the considerations for compliance. So with regards to the signage, the signage would be reviewed by the building department, and Mike, we'd like to get a note on the plan that that will have to be referred to the building department for review, but they will also take a look to ensure that the signage complies. There may be limits to how much signage, so I know you're looking to leave what's on the wall, but sometimes in the codes, it'll say how much square footage you can actually have, so.
Understood.
All that has to be taken into consideration.
But there's, you know, I, I used to do this sort of thing where we would say like, oh, that's not a sign, that's artwork. That's, now it's become a different thing. That was when I was on the other side of the table, you know?
I'm not going to like hold my breath that we're going to find like a terracotta medallion or something under that.
Right.
Wooden, built-out, you know, fake mansard-looking thing, but it would be really cool if we did. So John passed me the printout of what I had called action items from the ARB meeting. So the first one was, we need the city to provide interpretation of all the regs related to signage. And one of them was the fact that, John, you had talked about the sign projecting above the roof could be an issue, and then we had to consider whether the new monitors define the new roof elevation or whether it's the coping or whatever. So that's, that goes to your comment, John Russo, it's going to go, so that, we talked about the one about, you know, some of the, you know, getting greater design cohesion, and that was something, I think just the tenor of the conversation, we thought maybe we were going to see another tweak on that.
On pulling it all together, having a consistent theme with variations or whatever, but.
Applicant had a question about potential city financial contributions to sidewalk replacement. That was just, so again, it's just an, it's an action not really for us necessarily, but it was an action from our conversation. The planting plan, you know, they needed a commitment to non-invasive wisteria for the, of the possible wisteria selections for the, and removal of bark, of the barberry from the planting plan, because that's a non-native invasive, right? And then the next one was the revision to the neon script, which you did a.
We did.
A mod on that. And the last one was that you were going to experiment with the, with the garage signs' location in terms of sightlines, which I think you've, you've put into this package, right, so.
We did.
So we, so we're covering them.
You have a copy of that?
No, I don't think he does, because I made, I just created it really for you, but I mean, you can certainly share it with the applicant.
I gave a comment and I thought it might be online, if you want a copy, just.
Yeah, because I did, because otherwise I had to communicate the, you know, the meeting minutes to you, so.
Yeah, in, in the package, we highlighted all the sign requirements and showed conformity. I, you know, it's like, the, the mansard part of it is a large roof, so I don't know, like, is it a parapet, is it a roof? Because it says technically, it says eve, and there's no eve on a flat.
The way the signs approvals work in the city of Beacon, which is different than most places, is that unless it's in the historic district, which this is not, it just goes for administrative review through the building department.
Yeah.
So it's not really part of site plan.
Okay.
We don't usually look at signs unless they're in the historic district, so, you know, you can include them on the plans, and we encourage if so, that you have a note on there that it says it will be approved by the building department, and it'll just go to them after, after the approval of site plan.
Okay.
And they'll determine whether the height, where the roof line is technically and that sort of thing.
Right.
I think it's fine.
And Dave Buckley was part of our meeting.
It's not, the sign is not approved.
Bruce, go forward.
Bruce, yeah.
So let's, for the purpose of kind of keeping the focus focused, you're done, Kevin?
Yes.
Karen?
I don't have any concerns. The wisteria that's on the planting list is the native, but the barberry is the issue with the invasive species.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was changed out. It will be.
Okay, just going back, is anybody from the public here for this application? Okay, let me entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think Jennifer on this one.
Yeah, so at your last meeting, you did direct preparation of a resolution, so you do have a draft resolution in front of you. I think the question is, are you satisfied with respect to the architecture? Because your approval resolution does include architectural approval as well, so putting signs aside, is the board satisfied with the architecture, or do you need to see another go-around?
No.
Were the, is this, this, this has changed since we had our review meeting, right?
You want to show the, just to show the new renderings?
And the reason I'm asking that question is, you know, if you are not yet satisfied, what we can do is two things. One, defer consideration of the resolution until a revised, you know, architectural plan is submitted, or adopt the site plan resolution with a condition that the applicant has to come back to finalize the architectural review.
Let's find how, how, how are we feeling?
I'm fine with the approval with condition, or with, the second.
Karen?
I agree. I don't have issues with the architecture, but I support my, you know, architectural review board.
I'm feeling pretty good about the architecture, but I'm also supportive of just putting in that condition that we'll just take one more review of it and then, so we're going to, like, we're doing like a conditional approval?
What you mean, so does that mean another ARB review?
We can bring it back to the whole group. Yeah, we'll just bring it back to the full board.
Full board, yeah.
But quick question, so.
What is the issue?
What is the issue?
Exactly, because they got to know what they're doing.
What do they have to do?
Yeah, I mean.
There's just the note, the one thing is the note for the sign to be.
Yeah, but the sign is off, the sign is not an issue, that's got nothing to do.
Yeah, put signs aside.
If we don't want to see anything. If we're not feeling that we need to see something further, going back to that comment about trying to.
I, I'm, I'm, I don't have any major issues.
Then we're good. We don't need a condition.
Then motion to.
We can just approve now.
Approve.
And let me just mention, so based on the discussion tonight with some of the new information about street trees requiring a native species, getting rid of the grades, doing perennial plantings flush with the sidewalk, I did add notes that the, the plant set has to be updated with respect to those items. Those were not, you know, incorporated in comments up until today.
So a motion respective to what Jennifer just said and what John was speaking with, can I get that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be really fun.
Next, we're going to move on to public hearing on application for site plan approval, special use permit and subdivision, lot merge approval, multifamily residential, 62 units, 16 West Main Street, submitted by Farrell Building Company.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start. Steve Spino with JMC. We're the site engineer, along with R.A. Siegel, architect, here for 16 West Main Street. This will be our second public hearing. We've had the secret public hearing in May, June, July, and since then, we've just been addressing the remaining comments that we had from John and John and from Stark, and also we met with the traffic safety committee, went before the city council, submitted to the Duchess County Health Department. submitted to the Dutchess County Health Department, um, met with Central Hudson, so we've just kinda been going through the progressions of all the different utility companies, um, you know, getting ready to, uh, start construction. So, we've been trying to do those kind of, uh, uh, items in the meantime and, uh, you know, we're here tonight, uh, we made a submission with a little bit more detail since the last submission, very minor changes, uh, we think we may have addressed a few comments along the way and, um, we're here tonight for the public hearing for site plan, uh, subdivision, uh, and the special permit, so, um, I, I don't know if I need to give a long presentation, um, everyone's, you know, we've been here a few years now, so I think everyone's heard it. Uh, well, uh, I think-
Can I just have a motion from the board to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this public hearing is on special permit for the parking as well, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So, um, I, I think, uh, really, uh, the site is, um, you know, it's an existing, uh, auto facility right now, um, a lot of development on the site. We're just proposing, uh, to remove that, demolish it and construct a four-story residential apartment unit, uh, building with associated parking in the rear. Uh, we have access off West Main, access off Bank Street, um, there's a lot of, uh, streetscape improvements for, for the area there on the corner of, of West Main and Bank. Uh, we're proposing to redo sidewalks, install landscape planters, a lot of landscaping, hardscape, uh, should look really nice. Um, we've also gotten our architectural review board, uh, review and approval as well. So, uh, we're here tonight just to, uh, answer any, uh, questions from the public and, and anything else that the board has.
Um, let me go to the public first. Anybody here from the public for this application? Okay, let's start with our professionals, go around the board and-
Um, just to update everybody on this, uh, the rear parking, which is in the residential district, the city council adopted a law, uh, early this month that allows the planning board to issue a special permit in this case for parking on the adjacent residentially zone parcel. Um, I don't believe it's been filed yet, so it's, but it would be imminent. It's been up there at Department of State for a while, I haven't heard that confirmed that it's been filed, but presumably by next month it would be in effect. So, um, that would need a special permit from the planning board and that's part of this public hearing. We anticipated this might be passed by now. Uh, the only other points that I have is that, um, the site plan now shows in the last couple iterations and I noticed it that there's chain link fencing on the top of the retaining walls, chain link fencing's not permitted in the linkage district, so you're gonna have to go to a different type of fencing.
Okay, so even in the, the rear of the site?
Well, technically you could do it in the residential district, there's no prohibition, but on the linkage district, you can have chain link fencing.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't think we changed it, but if we did, um-
Yeah, it, it, I, I checked on the previous version and it wasn't there, it just said fencing along, it didn't specify what type.
Okay.
This, this type said chain link fencing, so-
Right.
With slats and, so in the linkage district, that's not permitted. And then the only other thing is the, um, the elevations, uh, don't reflect the renderings in terms of the brick and, uh, fiberboard patterns.
Yeah, I'll get that answered.
Okay, because the approvals on the elevations, not on the renderings, everybody should be clear in that the renderings are for, you know, informational purposes.
Yeah, and that, that was important because it was kinda created that interlocking, you know, design element that was-
Yeah, so they, the, the elevations have to be corrected to make sure that they're up to date and clear. Okay? Otherwise, we're done.
Mr. Russo?
Uh, so as Mr. Spina noted, they submitted to Department of Health. We actually got the response letter from the Department of Health today, very minor comments with some notes that have to be added to the plans and some revisions to the details, uh, which I'm assuming you're gonna get that turned around pretty quickly back into them.
Yeah, we're gonna reply to them right away.
So I think they're going to get approval from the Department of Health pretty quickly on this. Um, a lot of the comments we have are previous comments, uh, that we've made with regards to bonding of the project, construction schedules, stormwater maintenance agreement, uh, the demolition plan, um, but one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, Steve, was, um, an easement would need to be shown on the easement plan for the stormwater, or actually for access to the site to reveal stormwater management systems. Um, you know, you've, you've submitted a stormwater, um, maintenance and easement agreement, we need to have an easement, unless you're gonna provide a blanket easement over the entire site or-
That was my understanding, was a blanket easement.
Okay, so then somehow that needs to be detailed on the plans-
Okay.
-stating that you're providing that. As of right now, there's nothing on the plans to say we can access the site.
Is there any change, so there'd probably be some changes in the language then of the agreement we sent?
Um, I'll, I'll take a look at that, um, likely not, but I'll take a look, um, given the intent for it to be-
Okay, yeah, whatever it is, we'll make it. I think the owner's intent was just to provide access to the site for, you know-
It's probably easy, it's because we'd be looking at all structures across the entire site, so it's easier to just give a blanket.
And then the schedule and the easement for the description of the easement area would just be the schedule A from the deed, the whole property, the whole meets and bounds.
Right, okay. Okay, so we ju, we would just add a note to the plans to that effect? I think you might have had a comment kinda guiding us on that, okay? Yeah, we can, no problem.
That's all I have. Karen?
No, comments?
No.
Sure?
Yeah, I was wondering about the landscaping, am I, I'm not seeing the, the final version here, is there, is there a plan, a landscaping plan here?
Uh, yeah, we have it here. It should've been the last sheet in the, uh-
It's the last sheet.
Yeah, there it is. I think it's the last sheet in the set, L-100, so-
Oh, land, huh?
Yeah, it's up on the screen now, but the-
Sheet twenty-nine.
Yeah, so I was wondering about the, um, plantings between the building and the existing building to the east, um, because right now there's a lot of trees there and I know you don't have to keep them if they're below a certain size, so, um-
So, I, I think right now we propose some shrubs there along the east side of the building and there are existing trees there now, but they would have to be removed as part of that temporary construction easement, um, with the adjacent property owner just to build the building.
Yeah.
Um, and then in, kinda working back and forth with them on the easements, uh, we offered to, um, you know, plant some trees kinda in that space there, uh, on their site, but they didn't want us to do that because I, I think, I don't know if they've done it yet, but they're supposedly coming in for some parking lot modifications and they wanna put parking over there?
Hmm.
They haven't come in yet.
Right, so they, they sent us a, kind of a concept plan and they didn't, you know, they just didn't want anything over there. So we, we just put some shrubs, you know, right along the property line on, on, on our side, um, and that was it. So it would just be, uh, you know, lawn on that little slope there.
Uh, okay. That's too bad. Um, yeah, because that looks like a lot of paving right there.
You understand?
Yeah, it's all this.
That's also all retaining wall in there too.
Yeah.
So-
But there's stuff there right now. I don't know, I'm not sure.
You, you mean right along the right side of the new building, right?
Well, and behind it, the parking lot itself, I mean, you've got retaining wall in that whole area that's, you know, to construct that.
Oh, yeah, that, so that little strip-
They're constructing retaining.
Farther to the north.
So they wind up ripping through everything to-
But it looks like there's that space between the wall that they're building and the existing, it's not on their property.
It's actually another, so there, there's an existing wall that's right there on their property.
Right, that's what you're talking about.
Right, so, um-
And that might get taken down?
No, but, um, I, I guess it's, well, number one, it's not on our property, but number two is, uh, just the, to build the other wall that's on our property to the left of the existing wall that's on their property, there's just not enough room there to, to-
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, to-
I'm just wondering if in the discussions with the, the other property owner, if you've come, you're saying they don't wanna do anything because that, are they gonna take that wall down?
So it's-
They're really talking, I'm talking to the line, sorry, right here.
Mm-hmm.
That, that little area to the, just to the right of the proposed building is where we've been told they're looking to add more parking, just kinda continue that row of parking.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they didn't wanna, they don't wanna have any trees to then remove in the future and whatever, whatever else might come along with it, so they just kinda said, leave it as lawn.
Okay. No more comments.
I'm going back to the public. Anybody here on this application? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on. Hold on. She just slid in.
Peg Suttonfield, Main Street, Beacon. I wasn't here earlier and so I'm just curious what the, um, conversation has been about the view shed, maintaining a view shed through, uh, to the river.
The view shed.
Okay. There.
I think, I think where we ended up on that one, uh, from the last public hearing, uh, was how we, we basically explained that, um, you know, the, the proposed building is, you know, it, it meets the code in terms of the height, so we're following the, the code, um, and, uh, you know, so we didn't think there was, I guess, uh-
The only comment I remember was, is from one of the business owners in the, the building next, next door-
Right.
That, um, was concerned, she was concerned about, uh, construction debris and dust and stuff coming in.
That's a different name of view shed though, I mean the-
No, and then also the, the greenery outside, so.
I mean, you-
I know it's not the same as the view shed over there.
Right, because the elevation changes pretty dramatically as you go down West Main, so as you're, as you're coming off of, what is it, Beekman, I'm sure, I would imagine you're still gonna have a pretty unobstructed view of the, of the Hudson.
Yeah.
And the other thing, it's not, there's no, like, designated, um, protected view shed in this location either.
Yeah, the only designated view shed in, in the area is at the corner of Main and Nine D, which is so much higher than you can see, and you can see right down the West Main Street corridor and this would not block that-
Right.
-that view. So yes, you know, somebody who's coming out the side door of the brewery or something will not be able to see, um, greenery, but it's, it's not a protected view in any way.
So let's, let's continue down the path a little bit. So I have a first-
Right, so we have a-
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now. Moving along with this, um, what do we do?
So the next step would be to, um, direct preparation of a resolution for your next meeting.
Right, can I-
Motion to direct preparation of resolution?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. That's all we can do, you're done?
So at the next meeting, um, we'll have a, a resolution available for the board to consider, um, adopting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and John, we'll, that one fence, we'll probably just make it the, uh, that aluminum wrought iron look like we're doing along bank.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you guys, thanks so much.
Yep, moving on to item number seven, continued review of application for subdivision approval, two lot residential, forty-six Judson Street, submitted by Forty-six Judson Street LLC.
I don't think so. Let me, I'm in.
Who's next?
The next to me, the one you can just choose.
Oh, Cross Street.
This is, sorry, Judson is the, after that.
No, he's, he's-
No, is this Forty-six Judson though?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, Cross Street, two, four Cross Streets, Joe Downing, one there, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Get my hopes.
I didn't see the record.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Good evening, Glennon Watson from Beatty and Watson. Um, we closed two public hearings last month and, uh, we're hopeful that you're gonna adopt resolutions giving us, uh, closing secret loop and giving us a preliminary approval on the subdivision. We have received comments from John Russo and, um, the planner, uh, John Clark, and, um, we've, they're not addressed on what you're seeing here, they've been addressed lately. Uh, two of the details, John, noticed on our plans need to come off, we've taken them off, uh, we still have to write the property descriptions for the easements and we'll, just didn't have time to do that. Um, there was a comment with regarding the revised planting plan, uh, specifically the trees along the neighbor that were designed to, um, screen the neighbor's pool, uh, Mr. Clark raised concerns with regard to, uh, the height of the, being too high and, um, potentially casting shade on the, on the pool that would make it less pleasurable to be using the pool. So, we looked today, I had somebody look and we think that that's not a, that is not really a problem. We, one of the fellows that knows how to do it went through and did a sunrise and sunset over the thing and we do cast a shadow on the pool, but it's about six o'clock at the worst time, during the hottest periods of the day, it's not. But that being said, if there's another suggestion, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to employ it. One, the other issue with that particular, um, plant that was explained to me is that, um, it was chosen to, for, to avoid leaf drop into the pool and, uh, but we're, we're working with that. The other, I think that was the only significant comment on Mr. Clark's report, so we're hopeful that, uh, we can have your resolutions tonight and go about getting our planning, our health, health department proven, taking care of those little items.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I raised two issues. One, uh, there was a comment that going corner lots, you have, the side yard may be reduced to twenty-five percent of the actual lot, lot width and, um, the way this really reads is that the side yard setback is fifteen feet. Uh, if you wanted to go less than that, up to a quarter of the lot, you could. So you don't have to move the lot, uh, the, the building back. The side yard can be fifteen feet is what I'm saying. Because it says, you know, that, um, there shall be provided the side yard on the side street equal in depth to the required front yard on said lot. Or if the lot is to be occupied by one family home, such side yard may be reduced to twenty-five percent of actual lot width. So if you had a fifty-foot frontage, you could have it down to twelve and a half feet, but-
But we're, we're at twenty-five percent is, is, is what, we held the twenty-five percent. You don't, you think I could go tighter than that?
And in, and in fact, uh, during the accessory apartment, um, revisions, the front yard for a, um, lot in this district was reduced by five feet to give more, so all the lot, residential lots, uh, R-one lots were reduced by five feet in the front yard. So now the front yard is ten feet, not fifteen feet.
But we're- we're at twenty-five percent is what we held at twenty-five percent. You don't- you think I could go tighter than that?
And in fact, during the accessory apartment revisions, the front yard for a lot in this district was reduced by five feet to give more- so all the lot, residential lots, R1 lots, were reduced by five feet in the front yard. So now the front yard is ten feet, not fifteen feet.
That's this recent change that you talked about before.
Yes, that is not quite in effect, but soon to be.
Okay.
So, the point being is you could maintain that at fifteen feet if you wanted to, but I'm okay with seventeen feet as well, just change the table so that it matches the side yard setback.
I'll talk with my client about it, I just, I think, but thank you for pointing that out.
And I would suggest you come up with a evergreen hedge tree that is more in the fifteen-foot range rather than the thirty-foot range, just to avoid shadows on the property next door, and I would think that that would provide enough screening for-
Yeah, I think that, yeah, was the issue, was the deck, and maybe that will work. We'll look at it.
Okay. So, that's the only final thing, I think enough screening so that it screens from the deck, but that doesn't throw shadows on the pool or leaves in the pool. And there must be a species, I don't have one on top of my head, maybe Karen can help, but, that I can throw out there, but there, I'm sure there's a version of junipers or some other type of evergreen that would work just equally as well and be not quite as tall.
Mr. Watson?
As Mr. Watson said, we're waiting for easements to be submitted, so once they prepare descriptions, we'll be able to review those, and there was a few minor cleanup details that they were to take care of on the plans.
Okay. Major?
Nothing major.
Jill?
No comments.
Karen?
No, no further comments.
Jennifer, from here?
Yeah, so from here, you closed your public hearing at the last meeting-
Yep.
...and you directed preparation of a resolution, so you do have a resolution of preliminary and final subdivision plot approval ready for you to act upon, and I didn't hear anything tonight that would require any edits to the draft that was provided to you.
Excellent. May I motion?
Motion.
Motion, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The secret finding incorporated in that resolution?
Yes, the secret was done before we opened the public hearing, that deck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So just pick those two changes-
Yeah.
For the final version to be signed.
Yes. Moving on to item number eight, continued review of site of application for site plan approval, revised two nineteen, two Cross Street, four Cross Streets, one seventy-two Main Street, three-story mixed-use building submitted by Hudson Todd LLC.
Thank you, Joe Donovan, the owner, with my wife of the property. We don't have our design team here tonight, we have comments from both the city's engineering and planning consultants, and we believe those are cleanup items, we are fully ready to comply with them. We think we're in a position, I hope, to ask for a resolution of conditional approval, but we're also here to answer any questions you may have.
John? John?
The only thing I asked is, well, there was two things, one came up about the below-market rate-
Yeah.
-compliance with Article, whatever it is. The way that was resolved on West End Lofts, in which you were actually providing more than required, but you don't actually meet all the specific requirements in the code, is that there's a waiver provision at the very end of that, unfortunately involves-
So, we were proposing instead, I think there was some back and forth between our engineer and the city's consultant said today, we would like to just fully comply, not ask for any waiver, and then in addition to that, it is our, fully our intent to have the, of the nine senior apartments, that those we expect will be in the ESG program, that's our intent, we haven't inked that deal, you know, we haven't seen the dollars on that, but we expect that to happen. Independent of that, just have the normal zoning code requirement on top of that for the two below-market rate apartments.
So in otherwise, you'd have, you'd have two BMR units that are not specifically designated for senior, but to which we would apply the priority listings-
Correct.
-in the code, and then on top of that, you'd have nine units that are senior-
Yeah, and those two below-market rate apartments would be committed for the fifty years in compliance with the standard zoning code obligation, and the ESG program, which is not a fifty-year program, would be separate from that.
And then the balance are market rate?
Correct.
So there'd be eleven?
That's our expectation at this time.
Eleven affordable or below-market rate housing?
Right. Two obligated for fifty years-
Okay.
-and the others not.
So two would be fully compliant with the affordable housing provisions, and the nine others would be senior housing, affordable?
Correct.
So that shouldn't, that doesn't change the parking calculations, correct? Because they're all, yeah, it's not-
Actually would improve the parking, because now eleven units would be-
Well, the below, I don't think the below-market rate gets you as parking waiver.
Oh, you're right, those are senior.
Right, I think there was a different parking calculation applied to senior versus the market, yeah.
Well, if you're willing to do that, that eliminates one-
Yeah, it's just, from our perspective, one less, you know, party involved is a good thing.
All right, so the other, the other thing I raised, there were two comments by Dutchess County Planning, and I just wanted you to address those because-
Sure. So one of them was-
Things that had me in love with us.
Yeah, one of them was about the big glass windows and what's going to be behind those windows, and is it going to be a concern either for the people inside or for everybody on the street because of what the people inside are doing? And we've had that concern, and we won't have tinted glass, we won't have reflective glass, because that would be in violation of the zoning code, and we think a bad idea. We don't have it entirely defined, but we're going to have some sort of visual screening inside, either integrated into the glazing or immediately inside the glazing, which will take that issue out of the discretionary control of the people inside the units, so that there will be probably a fixed mini-blind kind of arrangement, you know, from a cafe curtain height down. We don't have a specific element on that, but it's, we're conscious of it, it's a design detail we think should just be part of what we are developing along with a million other details in the building.
And the other one?
What was the second one?
They were concerned that the walkway to the parking lot would take away a building lot-
Right, so-
Which is a hole on Main Street.
Yes, and so what we'd like to have happen with that is similar to what the city did for the building on Beekman here, which is to say there's an easement requiring pedestrian through passage, but the easement is not fixed, but can be located anywhere on that property, so it could be incorporated into the building, subject to approval by the building department as part of a normal permit process at a future date. It could either be incorporated into the building, or the building could leave it on one side, and that allows us to develop that site as both the county and we ourselves would like to develop it eventually.
You're saying incorporate the public walkway inside the building?
It's not a public walkway, it's a private walkway from the parking to the, out to the Main Street sidewalk, so that you can then-
Oh, for the tenants.
Yeah, we don't know how we'd propose to do it in the future, we haven't designed that building, we haven't even thought about that building yet.
But the walkway is not a permanent feature that would avoid building on that property sometime in the future, if you should choose.
Yeah, so-
Right, it would be there on the property, but it could be shifted.
It could either be outside of the building, and the building could take up five feet less than the full width of the property, or it could be incorporated into the building and just made a accessible twenty-four-seven unlocked passage within the building.
So the easement itself would not define a specific meets and bounds location for the walkway, it would describe it has to be a ten-foot, five-foot, whatever, the width of the walkway.
It would define a legal right for pedestrian passage-
Of a certain width.
-twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five of a certain dimension.
Yeah, yeah. I'm okay with that.
We also, I'm not sure if this is anything that could be incorporated and probably not, I think it would just be a subsequent site plan approval. It's entirely conceivable that at some point in the future, we will have options for a more direct passage from that parking to Cross Street through one parcel or another. So we would, but I think that probably would just be a separate site plan application in the future.
John?
So, we don't really have a lot of new comments at all, a lot of the comments we have, we've made previously several times, and the applicant is working with their engineers to address the comments. They've brought on a structural engineer to look at retaining walls, look at the impacts of planting of trees near the walls, so I have nothing else to add at this point in time.
Thanks, Jill.
Well, speaking of passageways, there were several public comments about, I know there's not a lot of room on the plan, and there aren't renderings in this package, but doing something to facilitate the path, it's not a passage, but the walkway across the corner-
Cutting across the corner. I think we addressed that in the resubmitted plan by pulling the planted area back so that there's continuous pavement across that.
Oh, I didn't see-
Can somebody call that up?
On the west side of the plaza now, there's a planter around that tree, but it's paved between, you know, you can walk diagonally across that plaza area.
In the previous submission, it had been a planted, therefore not particularly walkable surface all the way from the corner into the building, and then at the suggestion of the planning board at the last meeting, we revised that, so it's just a planted area around the tree, and then there is a walkable pavement between the tree and the building.
I thought it meant that there would be more landscaping, or, so no more kale? Is that what you're saying? No more kale?
No more kale.
That's too bad.
We can grow kale on the roof, but I don't know that we had kale before, we had something.
Can I do, Jill?
Yeah, I guess.
Nothing further?
No, the landscaping that you removed from that corner, is it now on the east side of the plaza, or do you know where it went?
We, yeah, we were at ten point two, ten point two-plus percent before, and now we're at ten point zero 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 one or something. So I think we fattened up one other little sliver of pavement.
Yeah, they increased it a little bit on the east side to compensate for the loss of it on the west side.
But those calculations show up on both the engineering drawings and the architectural drawings, I believe.
And I went over them, and they do come to just over ten percent.
Okay, great, I'm glad it worked out. The other, I'm not sure if, refresh my recollection, where we landed with the brick selection? Did we?
Yeah.
Was that, that was open last month, I think, at the end?
Right, so you'll find on the elevation a specific reference in the latest submission to the brick, and so we're, it'll be full-depth mortar-set brick, real brick, it will be a Roman dimension, but with a, with the Wikipedia definition of Roman as opposed to some other definition of Roman, which is to say it'll be longer and a narrower proportion.
Still in like the twenty, the twenty-inch range?
The, we don't know yet, is the short answer, because we, Watson Town brick had a twenty-four inch brick, and then they had a sixteen inch brick, and now they don't, and now they have a twelve inch brick. So we're not exactly sure whether it's going to end up, so it's, we're going to try to get a sixteen to twenty-four inch brick, because that would be sort of fun. But if, and I'm sure we could get one if we hired elves to make them one at a time, but we're going to try to find a commercially available brick that's in that dimension, but since it's been a little hard to, there's the one, I think it's a Swiss or Swedish brick that we know we can get, and it's just-
I priced it myself, yes.
Yeah, it's just not, not a reasonable cost point, and we're pretty sure we can get a longer brick. Worst case is, it'll be a twelve inch brick, but we're hoping that it will be a sixteen to twenty-four inch brick.
Okay, so then therefore I assume that the color is still up in the air, because I think-
No, no, we, well, the color is up in the air, every brick is different after it's baked, but we say on the elevations that we submitted, it will be Watson Town something.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a specific manufacturer and a specific clay and a specific color on the drawings, and we say that or similar.
All right, I think we'll need to see a sample.
Yeah, because I-
It's, it's one of the ones that Austin brought to the last meeting?
Yeah, we brought it to the last meeting.
Or not, or not last-
Right, I know, but I think that there was some discussion as to-
Right, I was, I mean, I'll just say I was hopeful that any more- I don't know.
We had a Flint Hills before.
Yes, the more unique Flint Hills town, which seemed to work with other unique buildings, right, you know what I'm talking about?
I, yeah.
And differentiated it from some of the other new buildings, right? I thought that was a fresh thing, if you can somehow find that way to happen, and I just-
Well, if you can find some way to give us the ability to do that, that would be great. What happened in the last two meetings is-
They pushed you more traditional.
That's what we presented, was the Flint Hills, you liked it, we liked it, we think it's great, and we were told that, eh, you ought to come back with something more red.
Now, who said that?
The chairman said that.
John Gunn.
Yeah, it was John, unfortunately, because he was, he said people were going to freak out, it was too different.
He was afraid that it didn't comply, conform with the rest of the new construction.
I don't know what went on behind closed doors.
I'm in open meeting, I'm just giving you my opinion about-
Yeah, so-
Variety.
I don't know, I don't know, the, right now the elevation say or similar, so I don't know who interprets what similar means, and-
Right, I just, I just, it's a point-
I don't know whether that's-
I mean, if the board does want to see, like, the final brick, you know, sample of the final brick, then we could put in a condition that before a building permit is issued, the applicant has to come back for a final review of the brick.
Guys, hold on a second, we're time, 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 time.
I need everybody kind of focusing, because we got people going back and forth, and you have the floor.
So I was just going to say that if the planning board needs to see sort of a final sample of brick, we could put a condition in the resolution that before a permit, building permit is issued, the applicant comes back with whatever sample.
For what it's worth, you did see the brick that's on the elevation, it was brought here to the last meeting, it was approved at least in some verbal discussions at the last meeting, that's why it's on the elevations, but we can certainly bring it back again. And then the question is, we purposefully put or similar on the drawings because it's, you know, there's quite a few months between now and then, and so, and if you could give us some sense of what or similar means in terms of, is there a process that allows us to, to not have somebody tear the brick off the facade later than sue us?
We don't want that to happen, certainly. So I think probably the cleanest, clearest way to avoid any sort of vagueness or, you know, unclear result is for you to come back at the time you have that final product.
Come back to the planning board.
Back to the planning board.
That's fine.
Okay.
Good, okay.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Great. Just a, and maybe, just a comment, just to kind of share with the board, and sorry about the sidebar, but the sidebar is, you know, often when we get resubmitted packages from applicants, they've, they narrow the focus from month to month, and, you know, elevations are not carried along and repeated in the packages, which then causes us heartache when we're looking for stuff, you know, when we have a question or a discussion, and just so, I'm kind of just screaming into the void, but it would be great if applicants continued to maintain elevations in the packages so that we're not, like I just did, going into the archive from August to find the elevations, so that Jill can check them out, you know, while we're having discussions.
Okay, we did submit this month, elevations.
They didn't, somehow they didn't end up in the, in the end of the package.
I got them from the elevations.
But we're working off online copies, so, you know, yeah, so, I don't know where that, maybe that's something, so maybe it's something that happened internally, at our end internally, so, but.
Yes, so next steps?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so you have, before we close the public hearing at the last meeting, you directed preparation of secret documents and a resolution, you have the part two of the full environmental assessment form in front of you, you also have part three with the negative declaration narrative attached that goes through all the relevant environmental impacts, so if you are ready- impacts. So if you are ready to move forward, you can do a motion to adopt the negative declaration.
Okay, and so motion to adopt that, okay, negative. Can I have a motion to adopt the negative?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you also have in front of you a draft resolution. I'm going to suggest edits to address the change with the BMR versus the senior housing affordable units, and also the condition about coming back for the final brick. Other than that, I think the resolution stands as is.
Can I have that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item nine on the agenda, review application for site plan approval, accessory apartment five Willow Street, submitted by Susan Batter, Batter's Bay.
Good evening. I just need a minute for this thing to come up, but, so the property's at five Willow Street, and it's in the T zoning district, and the owner is applying to create an accessory apartment in an existing two-story garage. So we, again, like that last accessory apartment application, have to redo the tables and notes and apply the new regulations to this. It, it seems that it was, you know, again, helpful to this application. It got rid of most of the variances, so I think that the only open issue is that it's a two-family dwelling in the T district, so, you know, does that mean that we necessarily have to go to the zoning board to ask for variance for them?
Or, what, what issue, I'm sorry, I missed, I was still catching up on the last one of administrative things here.
It's a two-family residence, and which accessory apartment is not permitted?
If an accessory apartment is, I mean, I would have to review the code for the, under the new law that was adopted, but if an accessory apartment is not permitted in a two-family residence, then yeah, that, that would require a variance, in my opinion. Ultimately, it's a building inspector determination, so we'll have to consult with the building department.
Yeah, it refers several times to single-family properties, right, the purpose and intent, it's the purpose and intent of allowing accessory apartments on all single-family properties. And it says under B, the owner of the single-family lot upon which the accessory apartment is located shall occupy at least one of the dwelling units on said lot. So it has to be owner occupied, it has to be a single-family lot.
Right. Do you know, is, is the issue the density?
Yeah, I would, I would imagine it's, you know, the council agreed to put two-family units on a single-family lot without the density requirement being changed, but they're not allowed to do it on three.
I mean, also, the, the, in, in the T district, you can have single-family, two-family, multifamily, and multifamily.
You can have two-family, and you can have two-family with an accessory apartment.
Right, but, but I'm just saying, you know, if, if the issue is density, I think there's a good, at least a good discussion with the zoning board.
Is it a two-family that's there?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have to go to the ZBA?
Right, yeah.
Wouldn't that be a use variance?
Yeah.
Is it owner occupied?
Yeah.
You still got to visit to the ZBA.
Right.
Wouldn't that be a use variance?
It might be, it might be. Well, either a use variance, or sometimes those are considered area variances with respect to density, so like a dimensional variance because of the number of units. Again, it's something that I, we can't opine on, on the spot here tonight.
Right, but it might be a use variance.
Okay. And then to get that determination, we-
New guy on the floor.
Well, I think it's pretty fresh in everybody's, the legislative intent, it's pretty fresh in everybody's memory, so we can probably get it.
Well, I think, I think that aspect of it was part of the old law as well, and I think it was always-
It was always single-family, we didn't change that.
Yeah. So, but, but in order to know what we'd be going to the zoning board for, we have to get a determination first, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do I talk to you, or do it?
Yeah, ultimately, it'll be a determination by the building inspector, but it'll be in consultation with my office.
Okay.
I'm sorry for this.
All right, but, but I think, I think that there was a couple other variances that we would have needed under the old regulations, which went away, so I think that is now the only open issue, and the rest of it seems to work out pretty well.
Yeah, the only other one is the, the minimum is two hundred feet, the maximum is a thousand square feet, you want a thousand forty. So you would, that, that is allowed for the planning board to allow for something larger, a building that's over five years old, so this would apply. So that's the only, it wouldn't require variance, but it requires a exception from this board.
Right, okay.
One thing that procedurally we can do is, you know, there's two ways an applicant can get before the zoning board, one, a permit denial from the building department, and two, a referral from the planning board if there's a pending application. So you can refer the application to the zoning board for whatever variance is going to be necessary as determined by the building department, and then they can continue on with that process, and then once they're done there, come back in the event of variance is granted.
Is anybody comfortable with that, with the motion?
Yes.
No reason to drag it out, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
So you can't, you can't approve any site plan application unless they get a variance to allow for the accessory apartment with a two-family dwelling. So they're going to need a variance. It's just a question of whether it's an area variance or a use variance. So, you know, if there are, you know, certainly give your comments tonight, but I think it's, it makes sense to have the applicant proceed before the zoning board first, confirm that they can get that variance. If they do, they can come back to you to continue and close out the review.
Yeah, because our comments may be moot at this point.
Right.
And then just procedurally, again, once we figure out if it's a use variance or an area variance, do we come back to the planning board with that, or go straight to zoning?
You can go straight. If the board refers you tonight, you can go straight, that's your ticket.
So let's see, are we comfortable referring this to ZBA?
Yeah, absolutely.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Again?
All in favor?
Aye.
We gave you a fast ask.
Thank you.
So you submit your application to the zoning board, but you don't have to come back here before.
Okay, but then, but then you do review their agenda and make some kind of recommendation, possibly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, got it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick, we're done with our basic business, but I want to find out if the two single-family houses that are here for architectural review, is anybody here, here? Okay. Which one are you, fourteen Holland? Are you sixteen? Come on down. Where's fourteen Holland?
I think he gave up.
Okay.
He thought it was going to be another 1:00 AM meeting. Wait, what?
We're shaving-
I know.
Half hours off.
We're shaving hours, come on, hours off of-
I guess it was an hour.
Well, we're not done yet.
An hour and a half we're shaved off. Thank God we had a one postponement.
No way. Come on up. We're going to do the single-family for architecture review, sixteen Coney Hill.
Coney.
Coney Hill.
Hi. Hey, good evening.
So what are we looking at?
We've actually already been given approval for a previous design.
Oh, yes.
But-
Why are you here?
Because we had to rethink the approach.
Explain, it's a weird word.
Well, COVID.
No, no, what did you change?
Oh, entire, like, the entire design, it was a much smaller scale house prior to this.
So you just did a whole redesign?
It's an entire redesign, yeah.
So you went from, are we, let's make sure, so we're looking at here. To explain, just give a little more narrative.
Oh, yeah.
What did you go from to give a size?
We went from designing a smaller house for ourselves to now-
Size, like, how big was the house you designed, to what is it now?
I think before it was under two thousand square foot, square feet, and now it's twenty-seven hundred square feet with a detached garage.
How many bedrooms and baths?
It's three bedrooms, three full baths. Now it's a, there's a-
And both of those were as of right?
Sorry?
Both of those were as of right applications that have been approved by the building department?
Uh, the previous one was, and this is the, yeah, current application.
It's, we're just approving the color scheme, right?
Yep, yep, this is arc review, right?
It's, so this is just for colors?
Yeah, architectural review.
Architectural review, oh, sorry, it's not just the colors, it's actually the-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So it's a whole house?
Yep.
Now, it's located, tell me if I'm wrong, it's located between Tyranda and the Sergeant Avenue, right? There's, and I have a question, this is not, Coin, the Coin Avenue?
Coin, Coin Hill Road, yeah.
Is that a private road, or is that a city road? I'm just curious.
You know, I, it's a private road, we put in the road per city specs.
Just generally for information.
Yep, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure it's been looked at.
Yeah, I think it's maintained in terms of like plowing and all of that privately.
Okay, it didn't come up on Google Maps.
Yeah, I know, we're still having, we're still having delivery issues.
It's below Sergeant School, and the driveway comes off of Canadian Hall.
There's kind of this heavily wooded area that's, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be aware of, but when you go down that area of Tyranda, isn't it-
Is this the old Spaccarelli subdivision?
I mean, it's currently still the Spaccarelli subdivision, yep.
I don't know that there's anything, is there anything to do there?
Guys, I really appreciate if you could keep this up, just because, you know, that's the part, I'm trying, all of us are figuring, this is kind of, we're not, I just, this is kind of all stale going back.
So you're traveling down Tyranda, you take a right onto Neville's. As you travel up the hill, as Neville turns left, their road, private road, turns off to the right and goes through the woods, travels along the school property, and the homes are located there.
Yeah, it's a dead end, has a turnaround.
So what's around it, envelope, all this other stuff?
Trees.
Basically, it's, it's a wooded area around, and there's another house you've done that looks very similar to this. It's sort of a weird-
Correct, yep.
It was, it looks like a Vermont, you know, rural country home in the city, and it's surrounded by trees, and it's, it's not, doesn't have an urban, any sort of urban or sidewalk, you know, fronted.
Yeah, it's not really visible from any direction other than the two neighboring properties, one of which we developed a couple years back.
I think the original approved subdivision had clearing limits that were on there.
Does this comply with the new?
I, we have never even seen this.
In term, in term, the question of complying, you mean in terms of setbacks?
Just in general, because all we have here is that basically-
We don't have a site plan?
We don't have nothing.
So we're just, you know, like, like the questions of like, can, is the garage in front of the house relative to the road?
Yeah, we need to look at a site.
Oh, I see, yeah, no, the garage, we've maintained all of those requirements. The garage is set behind the house.
I mean, for what you submitted it?
Where's the relation to the street?
Yeah.
Right, but the, the street is in front of the house.
You have a site plan?
Yep.
Plan view?
Mm-hmm.
Was it submitted to anybody ever?
Didn't know that that was required, yeah.
Okay, we need that.
Yeah, we need a lot more, just pictures of what you-
Just a couple of openings.
We need kind of-
On a private road?
I'm, I'm trying to figure, but what's, what's it referring to? Where is it? I mean, I understand we have a picture, but we're looking for-
Great, but do we need to do more than that?
No, typically that would be in the building department's purview at this time, to ensure that the building is situated on the site per the plans. I think you're looking more or less to make sure, as far as architectural wise, color.
Color, do you have any of that?
It's all on the submission, yep. Yeah, I think the requirements are that it's not too similar or too-
So what color is the spot stain?
It's called spellbound.
All right, is it?
It's a semi-solid stain on-
Benjamin Moore Armor Coat semi-solid spellbound, Western Red shingles, standing seam metal roofing.
Yep, and I have samples of both the roofing materials here and the color. Yep.
There we go, now we're using somewhere.
And there's an adjacent building you've already built, right? Adjacent house.
Yeah, we were looking for a two-lot subdivision, and we already built the, also lot two, a couple years back.
So this is the-
It has a similar composition.
Both of these are roofing.
This is the roofing, that's the standing seam metal, yeah.
And the spellbound is this.
Which, which transparency are you doing?
Semi-solid.
Semi-solid. Okay. Looks okay to me. Looks lovely to me.
I always just vote with Karen. You get two votes.
Karen, you get to make the most.
Motion to, motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You should have brought up the colors first, you had the red.
Good luck.
Well, we should, we should have a more consistent, we should have like a template that these conform to, so that like-
I think they want us to.
Yes, I, yes.
Fourteen Holland?
Never finished.
I'm trying to get these. Oh, wow, there's somebody here, okay.
He disappeared, he went for lunch.
Holland?
You can't bring him, come, come forward, just come forward, it'll make life way easier.
Okay, it's good.
That's good.
Can you see it, guys?
Yep.
My name is Bob Ramiro, I'm from, I am from Oklahoma, I'll see, I have a phone-
So much better.
... just the way back to March, I'm a real, alongside Jonathan Richell, who's been keeping the annual record, representing the latter twice house of the Son's for fourteen Holland, Holland Avenue. We're proposing a two-story custom colonial, Raj White, we're going to be looking to do a four-inch ceranteed white vinyl siding, vinyl board, and that is virtual, and also ceranteed white. Shutters will be a raised panel block. Window side will be a, a, a brick bowl six-hundred series, a long, and beginning, no grills are being proposed in the windows. The porch in the rear deck are going to be a Trex, foggy, or for color. Five floors will be black, will be black, and our gear will be graded stainless steel.
I'm sorry, did you say what the roofing material is?
Oh, I apologize, we're, this can be JAF, purple.
Looks good to me.
Have you been, have we did sort of frowned upon white final siding in the fence? No?
I don't think we're-
We dig that deep?
It's final siding in a non-historic district.
No, no, I understand, no, no, just the color, just the tone, and I, I thought there was an application before that we were like, oh, don't do the white, do-
It was all white, because it was all white.
Oh, because it was all white, understood, okay. So this has a little bit of definition, and it's a, it looks like a normal house.
Yes.
So, what can you do?
We have discussed before that the shutters are kind of superfluous.
Since John's not here.
The shutters, the shutters are superfluous, I can say it. It's like, they're just a design element, they're not working shutters, correct? Yeah.
But also, they-
They should be proportional.
They should be half the size of the width of the window. The shutters are proportional to the window, so that if you close them-
So that it looks like you could close them.
But you can't do it on the, on the setback, through the portion above the porch.
Yeah.
Impossible.
Right, and below the porch, there's a, there's a bay window with two shutters, which would do nothing if they actually did what shutters are supposed to do.
Oh, yeah.
And so, what John might recommend in a case like that is they like, just don't put shutters there, because they're meaningless, or they, they tell a bad story, right?
But, but the issue on this is then we're back to a full white house, so-
Below the porch, they'll put a pumpkin in it, rocking chair.
The same issue, the same, they have the same issue above the porch.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, ah, sorry, I didn't check, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
So I'd rather have some contrast color.
Oh, consistency and it's just...
I think it looks, I think it looks fine, and it's like the other houses in the neighborhood, but not too like them.
Yeah. And it's a lie we've all become comfortable with, I guess.
Of course.
We've drunk the cooling.
Yes.
Just, I'm just, I have an opinion, but just as a question, the two windows on the side of the house by the garage, how do you feel about those to be consistent with the front?
They should be, but it's hard to tell if they are or not.
No, I mean from the, they don't look like they have the shutter...
Oh, right, yeah.
Elements.
I feel like the shutter should go on that side.
Yeah.
For the, for the windows here, there are two windows that are...
What's the address?
The second one is for...
The address?
I don't know if we have space.
No, no, this one.
Or the fireplace.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, guys?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
We just...
There's a firehouse we're supposed to look at?
Yeah, there is a firehouse we're supposed to look at.
Okay.
But we don't really have any jurisdiction, do we?
It's like a recommendation, right?
Basically, the city is looking for some input from the planning board as to the architecture layout of the building.
Engine 51, squad 51.
Well, it's a lot better than what was the original, so...
So intent of this is... Can you tell me the material on the front, the forwardmost part of the...
You had a question. Hold on, you had a question.
I have a very positive remark. I just wanted to let everybody know, Rachel, Rachel was here at the first beginning, she brought in the Dallas and left in here, and she wants a patrol truck, she had to bring them here. She kind of left them over to me.
So you're the impala?
Yeah.
That's good.
We're going to waste if not.
I mean, we'll, we'll take it.
On our way out, when we're done with this...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm out, you listen.
It's that material, it's early block house.
It can't influence our decisions at all.
Early nuclear hardened block house.
So just let me explain there...
Just put them on there.
They're reversing the direction of the firehouse from South Avenue to Walcott.
Thank you.
And they're putting this bay on the, three bays on the north side of the building. That's, this is the existing building, that's the new building. The interior is set, they have all sorts of requirements for firematic stuff that they can't change, so they're essentially looking at just the facade issues. And this is an advisory opinion, the council has invoked the right to ignore zoning if they so choose on their own property. So they're just asking for your help and as to what it should look like on the outside.
I love the red doors. I think the windows on the existing building need some detailing. I don't like the material, the changed material between the part that sticks out furthest.
So you would prefer all brick?
Yes.
There is an option for all brick.
Yes, I think that's...
So the upper right is an option that they've looked at, so instead of having the stone and brick mix, to do more detailing on the brick as opposed as a way of making it look like a box. So they looked at the old May's Firehouse, and they're sort of picking up on some of the string courses and the cast stone capitals and things like that to sort of dress up the facade. So there's two options essentially on the table, one to mix materials, the other to make it all brick, but to provide some pop to the corners and the, and the architecture, put some casters on the corner and...
That'd be nice.
I like the all brick. I don't know if I like the line between the windows, like I feel like just the windows having some detail on them, but...
Detail how?
I mean, they're better on the all brick version than the mixed.
Well, that's, yeah, you're saying you like the all brick version.
I prefer the all brick version.
Right, with the horizontal band.
Is the public going to get to review this at the end of the day at all?
So this one is the one you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Preferable, it's the third.
It picked up on the May's Firehouse, they have a horizontal band across the front.
Oh, oh, okay.
To tie the windows together and create more of a storied effect. And the other one has a stone base on it, rather than sort of a stone foreground piece, it just has a foundational element.
So we're, I'm talking about the upper right-hand corner one. That's the one I prefer.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would. I, yeah. I would, I would have them look closely at the specific details and the, and the way that, the windows and the configuration of the windows. There's a couple of problems that they're having to deal with. One of them is if they are maintaining the fenestration, the way that the windows are set up, right, and the massing, which is a very, like a, you know, like an industrial building. It's sort of designed right now like an industrial building that would be on a highway, right? In that it's just these simple blocks, if you look at it across the street, right, it's a series of little rectangles with a couple of geometric cuts in them, and it's...
I'm sorry, I lost you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The existing massing, right, is set up like a, an industrial building on a highway, right? There's a office block in front, and there's a two-story part in the back, and it's just geometric, right? It doesn't, it's not masked like a traditional firehouse, let's say. So it's going to be difficult for them to make it look like, you can, with that massing, you can put decoration on it, right? Traditional decoration, but because the massing is the way it is, it will look like you've spray painted decoration onto something that's different, right? So it'll look like you've just put tinsel and whatnot. It'll be an applique, right? It won't really look...
It'll be ornamentation on a...
Ornament, yes.
On a cube building.
Yes, and so...
But it's not, I mean, ornamentation is an acceptable form of articulation of an architecture.
It's such a prominent spot in the city, like they need to pay some attention to the detailing.
It's super important. It's an entrance, it's another, now that they're, now that they've touched it, they got to fix it.
It's going to be another 344 Main Street issue. Are you, are you guys talking about this one? Have you seen?
This is the latest run.
Well, I didn't see that.
Because it's not, this isn't, this isn't in the...
Yeah, I can't see, yeah.
I don't know, it's in my package.
Delivered, I think either, I think it was today.
It wasn't in the, it's not in the package on the webpage.
That looks way better than that.
Yeah, it's weird. I got it, but he didn't, so...
Yeah. Where did you get it from?
Just the same, the package, the agenda.
I'm using the one off the city's website.
Yeah, me too.
And that's what she's using too.
I know.
No, it's not true. Your list of stuff isn't even the same. Unless somebody updated it since I got here.
I just put it on five minutes ago now.
Yeah, but...
I'm not.
We don't have the same list of selections.
I know.
The choose from, I don't have that, that image.
I like this one. Is this, is this, it's like kind of like what you were talking about, right?
We like that one.
Are you okay? Yeah, no, I'm probably going to need something, but...
Yeah, those are supposed to be like crazy. The idea was not to...
Do you need to go to Craig's house?
There's a real, yes. What, part of what they're doing here, right, is if you look at the DIA, right, they've got piers with concrete on top of them, right? So there's a, what's it called, a course, right? It's a concrete course that runs along, we've got it midway up, there's a, there's a cornice above that, that's just a flat modernist cornice, like a factory, like the DIA was, right, the Navisco factory. So that is one type of way of laying out a, you know, a modernist, simple industrial block or something that's, you know, boxy, non-traditional.
So you're saying it's okay?
I do this for a living.
Yeah, but I think the point we're trying to get to is what changes would you like to see? What input do you have on this?
Specific feedback. Okay, I have one, I have one. That arc, that arc... Who's going to communicate it to me? Amanda, okay. Okay, I have a comment. The curved roof over the door, over the main entry, I... Needs to be changed. Yeah, it could just be flat or peaked, but flat.
This does not, this is not like anything else. This thing does not go with the other.
Or if you do that, you make it into a feature that stands out and is part of, it's a feature that is part of the rest of the factory, right? It's not an applied thing that's from some other building, right, which is what it is now.
Okay, what would you like to see different?
Okay, the arch.
He doesn't move that quick. You got to let him wind up to, for Shendou. This is seriously...
Well, I mean, the other option would be, you know, you just take a look at it and provide your comments to the city administrator. I mean, they're just, they're just trying to give you something to look at to see if you have any input. I mean, the architects did go around the city taking a look at the architecture, and they really changed it from what was represented in the city.
I would eliminate the line, the gray line, like I feel like... That? Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Well, if you're going to do that...
I would agree to disagree gladly.
Yes, we'll keep it. Thank you.
I agree with this.
Amanda, you got all this?
Amanda's just like, what are you saying? You didn't capture.
I think, I think Kevin could have had a good idea. Let's live with it, make comments.
I think, yeah, articulated, and this is articulated, and this is articulated, right? Then this is all as a flat.
Kevin, the applique articulated.
John Clark, are you good with that? Will we live with it? Everybody emails comments to administrator, because this will be here, so...
So you prefer all brick? You prefer the more decorated version of all brick?
Yeah.
And except for the curved arch over the door, and the lack of street trees.
No, street trees would be good.
And I'll tell you, there's another thing, which is there isn't anything distinctive that calls it out as a, as a, as an engine as a...
Well, the red doors. Those red doors do, those red doors certainly do.
You want one of those like medallions, like the, kind of like a...
Traditionally, there would be some signage or something that's like a city municipal building, not a factory. It's a significant monument where it's, yeah.
Like a fire station medallion.
But there is, it says city of Beacon Fire Department right across the whole front.
It's a similar, it's the same signage they have on the set, on the series, right?
I was going to say exactly that, it's the same font as is on the wastewater plant in any, in any town that you could run into. It's just like, yeah.
But my point is that traditionally, in a lot of towns, right, this is also like the biggest amount of money that we've been spending in town for long times. Town never hasn't spent any money on a facility in decades since I came here.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
New buildings, things you look at, it's open underground.
So for the purpose, so let's, let's, let's...
Well, this is a very...
Let's get some cohesive comments.
Kevin, can I borrow you for a second? Just for focus, a second. So we can, I'll let you go back. Comments, so John can make simple notes. We're good with the red, respectively, all brick.
So you'll send them a mail, I'll communicate with the city.
Yeah, maybe that's, so if anybody has additional comments, so we don't kind of drive Amanda crazy, we'll email to John and we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
All right? Sounds like a plan?
Yes.
Is everybody okay if I recommend street trees?
Yeah.
Yes. Diversity in the species.
New crease. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have to say aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.